Regular meeting number 40 will now come to order. We please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Dorns, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is pleased to have my senior coady back to pray for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let us pray. Oh, good and gracious and merciful God, the members of Columbus City Council meet tonight in their last session before their annual break during the month of August. Many, many matters concerning the business of our city are before the members of council tonight. Give them the wisdom they need to make decisions that will respond to the common good of the citizens of our city. During the time of this break, help them to reflect, renew, and relax so that they can again take up their servant role on behalf of the citizens of our great, all-American city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, my senior. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorns, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to suspend with the reading of the Journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorns, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read?
Yes. President Harden, members of council, I received a letter addressed to me as the city clerk dated July 24, 2019, from city auditor Megan Kilgore, accompanied with a document entitled, "City of Columbus, Ohio Guidelines for Debt Issuance Recommended by Columbus City Auditor." This document updates the initial guidelines issued in September 2010. In addition, city attorney Klein forwarded a memorandum dated July 25, 2019 regarding legal sufficiency of the charter amendment petition entitled Section 242, Protection from Local Taxes and Fees on Arts and Entertainment, as required by Section 42-9 of the city charter, which states the city clerk shall, upon receipt forthwith forward to the council, the elections' authorities' report regarding signature validation, and the city attorney's findings regarding legal sufficiency. City Attorney Klein also forwarded a revised memorandum dated July 26, 2019 regarding legal sufficiency of the initiative petition that is generally referred to as the Clean Energy Petition.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any resolutions by members of councils? Start with Councilmember Brown. Sure. Councilmember Mitch Brown.
I do not have any resolutions this evening, Council President, but I do have one announcement. This year, we'll be celebrating our 36th Annual National Night Out. National Night Out is our annual community building campaign that promotes neighborhoods, camaraderie, and police community partnerships, all in support of our crime prevention. National Night Out is meant to facilitate local cooperation and support for crime prevention and to bolster neighborhood unity. It encourages neighborhood unity by bringing our citizens, civic groups, businesses, local officials, and law enforcement agencies together. There will be approximately 117 events scheduled across the city this year. Therefore, on August 6, I encourage each and every one of us to turn on their porch lights, come out and meet your neighbors, and get to know your community liaison officer. Working together with your neighbors and your CLO will help reduce crime in your respective community. And to my colleagues, there are T-shirts on everyone's desk for you to wear on Columbus Night Out on August 6. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember. Looking forward to it. Councilmember Dorns.
Thank you, President Harden. Just wanted to make one announcement this evening. I'd like to announce my August community hours will be held on Wednesday, August 21st, from noon to 1:30 at Whetstone Library. We have not found our pizza place yet because there's a hot debate in our office about which pizza place in Clintonville we should have.
Hot debate?
Very hot debates. We will have some local pizza for folks to have and hope folks come out and enjoy. That's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorns. Councilmember favor. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I don't have a resolution this evening, but I do would like to invite Dr. Paul Carringer, Professor Charla Fraley, Amber Battle, Michael Foye Armstead, all Columbus State Community College students enrolled in the Dresden Sister Cities Program, as well as representatives of Dresden Sister Cities to the podium. I want to start by welcoming you all to City Hall, Columbus City Council Chambers. Beginning next week, beginning the week of September 5 through September 15, in partnership with Columbus Sister Cities, Dr. Paul Carringer, Professor Charla Fraley, and four other faculty members of Columbus State Community College will escort 10 Columbus State students to Dresden, Germany, for a 10-day student exchange experience in preparation for careers in the engineering and information technology industries. As a spouse of a Columbus City school teacher and one that has three children in Columbus City Schools, I'm also very pleased to share that the majority of the students are recent graduates of Columbus City Schools and were in a special program with Columbus State to prepare them for this experience. The students and faculty also became certified tourism ambassadors, like myself and my staff, so that they have a fresh understanding of what the great city of Columbus has to offer as we open our doors to new talent and visitors. With this knowledge in hand, students and faculty will also serve as ambassador-like representatives of Columbus while in Dresden, Germany. Dr. Carringer, I would like to turn the floor over to you to share a little more about the program and what the students will gain from this experience.
Thank you. Council President Harden, Councilmember Remy, and other supporters of the Greater Columbus Sister Cities International, Councilmember Tyson is one. It's an honor to be here this evening, and thank you for your time. I am Dr. Paul Carringer, part of the program that will take 10 Columbus State Community College students to Dresden, Germany. With me tonight also is Professor Charla Fraley and Shane Bendelay. Shane's around here somewhere. In the 2016-2017 academic year, only 5,656 students from this United States, from community colleges and technical schools, out of a population of 12 million, went abroad for study. 5,656 out of 12 million. This program was designed, brought to us by the city of Dresden and by a couple of folks who are in the audience with us tonight, Dorit Fratcher and the Honorable Dixon Miller with Porter Wright. It was brought to us to open up a new way of thinking, to get beyond the financial restraints that technical and community college students often face, to get beyond the employment difficulties that they often are challenged with, and to get more than 2% of our population in community colleges to go abroad to look at not just culture and not just an experience, but how they do there what we're training them to do here. Through this unique program, we are addressing the funding constraints that our students have through a broad range of support from business, nonprofits, and you, the city of Columbus, and our council members and our great mayor. Thanks go to Dorit Fratcher and Dixon Miller, who really helped lead the charge and brought to us the program that we then molded, brought to the city, and asked for support, and you very thankfully gave support and believe in this program. Columbus State Community College is committed to providing the globally competent and competitive workers that attract international businesses to our region and support the competitiveness of the organizations and locally homegrown businesses already here. Whether as a customer, an employer, an employee, the need for intercultural and global competence has become increasingly important in American society. The student ambassadors you see with me tonight will be representing Columbus State Community College and our great city of Columbus and our region. They've been selected through a rigorous and competitive process. They have committed to extensive training and preparation for their mission to Dresden. Our citizens and you, our city leaders, will be proud of their representation. We will return mid-September, and we will present the outcomes of our work in Dresden at your convenience. This teaching and learning mission will include in-class observations, presentations by our students, visits to modern manufacturing facilities in Germany, and the development of a project video that compares and contrasts how our two cities operate. Thanks again for your support of this unique program, one of only two in the United States of America you're supporting. And now, I'd like to introduce two of our students, Michael Foye Armstead and Amber Battle.
My name is Michael Foye Armstead. I graduated from Mayfield Heights High School. I am a student ambassador at Columbus State Community College, and I will be graduating this coming spring with my associate of science.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amber Battle. I graduated from Northland High School. I'm entering my sophomore year at Columbus State, obtaining my associate of applied science and business management.
On behalf of our fellow Columbus State Community College students, I would like to say thank you, Amber and I would like to say thank you to the city of Columbus and to the Dresden Sister City organizations for all the support of this program.
We're very excited for this opportunity to learn more about the German culture and their technical education program. For many of us, it is our first time ever traveling abroad, and we would like to take this opportunity to say thank you because it wouldn't be possible without you all. We're looking forward to visiting German manufacturers and also visiting with our partner school, Bizetts.
We look forward to coming back and presenting to you all the experiences that we have when we come back. Thank you all, and thank you, special thanks to Councilman Remy for supporting this legislation.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much to both of you. I certainly appreciate the hard work that went into this to make it happen. As you mentioned, many of you hadn't been out of the country before, and so the thought of going through that process, the planning, getting a passport, and kind of working towards the goal of getting there, I know it wasn't necessarily easy, but certainly excited for the outcome. I'm looking forward to seeing the report, you know, when you come back. I'd also like to announce that the Office of Mayor Genther and Columbus City Council will also be providing a key to the city for the students to provide to the mayor of our sister city, Dresden, Germany, Lord Mayor Dirk Hilbert. Finally, I'd like to recognize and thank the Columbus State Community College faculty for their hard work in collaborating with the city of Columbus, especially you, Dr. Carringer. We appreciate everything, and of course, Charla, we thank you for all the hard work in this. Also, thank Columbus Sister Cities, Porter Wright, and many of the other organizations that helped to provide this experience to the students at no additional cost. Thank you for coming down this evening, and we wish you all safe travels. Yeah. Councilmember Tyson.
Councilwoman Remy, thank you for presenting this opportunity to the city of Columbus, and certainly though, helping to fund this particular program. I too want to say thank you, first of all, to Columbus Sister Cities. I see one of the board members, well, a number of them are here, but one board member, Michael Shaddick, sub-professor of the council dais, and want to thank him for his leadership. I certainly remember coming over to Columbus State when the young people from Columbus State came to Columbus to be able to spend time on Columbus State's campus from Germany, and the work that you did, Paul, and your whole team, and just appreciate that. I know they were looking for dollars at that time to be able to reciprocate, to send individuals there. I'm very pleased also, want to thank Columbus State and the diversity of students that are going to go and have this experience. I remember when the students came here from Dresden, they were all male, and there was absolutely no diversity in the group. I mean, I'm sure there's diversity within the group, but it wasn't as obvious as we're going to be sending diversity there. And so, I do appreciate that you are permitting these young people to be able to go there and have an amazing experience and to come back and to bring back to us and our city how we can continue to be a stronger city. And so, I thank you, Paul. I thank you, everyone here from Columbus State, and to Amber and to Michael, thank you for stepping up and being the inaugural group to go over to have this experience. What you do through this experience will allow others to have that same opportunity. So, go over, represent us well, bring those skills back to us, and congratulations on this opportunity for you. And to you, Councilwoman Remy, again, congratulations on bringing us together. And to Columbus Sister Cities, this is another opportunity for Columbus Sister Cities to be able to show why as a city we support this organization. So, again, thank you so much, and again, thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Tyson. Anyone else have anything? Thank you again, we appreciate it, and safe travels. Thanks. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, and good afternoon, and thank you, President Harden. And this evening, I'll be offering our Resolution Number 0210X, that's 2019. It's recognizing National Farmers Market Week. Will Michelle White, Julianne Walker, Cheryl Graffanino, and let me see, Samantha Sharkey, Landon Adams, and I know there are some other individuals that are in chambers, and I don't know if they're all going to come up, but I know, oh, is it, Marthene Brown, Adam Troy, Giovanni Lucas, and I don't know if Jasmine Ayers is all in chambers. So, these are all individuals who are certainly even working on farmers markets. This resolution is to celebrate the National Farmers Market Week and to recognize the role of farmers markets, their managers and producers, and the Ohio Farmers Market Network in helping residents of Columbus and Franklin County attain greater access to fresh, locally grown fruits and vegetables. Whereas, August 4 of 2019 to August 10, National Farmers Market Week is an opportunity to bring the awareness to the health benefits and economic impacts of shopping for fruits and vegetables at farmers markets. Whereas, in Franklin County, one in four adults eat vegetables less than one time per day, and almost half of the adults consume fruit less than one time per day. Whereas, eating five or more servings of fruits and vegetables every day can help individuals maintain a healthy weight and reduce the risk of diseases, including heart disease, high blood pressure, and some cancers. Whereas, Columbus City Council adopted the City of Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan in November of 2016, demonstrating the city's ongoing commitment to ensuring all residents have improved access to and education about healthy food, affordable food, and local food. And whereas, the farmers markets, such as those belonging to the Ohio Farmers Market Network, provide important access to fruits and vegetables for the residents of the city of Columbus. Whereas, farmers markets have the potential to provide a space for small and local growers to innovate and respond directly to customer demand, to attract customer traffic to other surrounding local businesses, and to create jobs. Whereas, it's been shown that only 17.4 cents of every dollar of dollar Americans spend on food goes to the grower compared to the 90 cents of every dollar growers receive at the farmer's market. Whereas, it's estimated that for every dollar spent at a local farmer's market, 30 to 45% stay in the area. Large change only returned 15 cents to the local economy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, this council does hereby recognize August 4 through the 10th as National Farmers Market Week and congratulates the Ohio Farmers Market Network on managers and producers of central Ohio markets on their efforts to support the growing, selling accessibility of nutrient-rich fruits and vegetables in our community. I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorns, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Cheryl, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council President Harden, Councilmember Tyson, and members of council. Thank you so much for adopting this resolution to recognize National Farmers Market Week. I am here tonight, very briefly, to introduce the amazing team of people who have really stepped up to help us implement the Local Food Action Plan. These are our farmers market managers from around the city who have been part of a project to bring major federal funding into the city to help build our farmers markets, and what they've done in the span of just one year is amazing. So, I want to take a moment to introduce Michelle White. She's also going to be joined by Julia Lynn Walker, who is a certified farmers market manager, who, funding from city council, has helped to support her being out at our markets throughout the city to provide increased capacity this year. And of course, then, we have our farmers market managers from our other markets in the city who do this work every day. So, please welcome Michelle White.
Good evening. Thank you to President Harden, Councilmember Tyson, and all members of council for inviting us to be here tonight and for recognizing National Farmers Market Week. I also want to thank Cheryl Graffanino, Jelisa Dawkins, and everyone involved with developing the Local Food Action Plan and their work in, and with me in that the last couple of years. The Ohio Farmers Market Network is thrilled to be working in partnership with the city, city and county health departments, and OSU extension to help build strong farmers markets that serve the health of our communities and boost our local economies. Again, many thanks to the city of Columbus for supporting our work and being a champion of local food and agriculture in the city. I hope to see everyone at a farmer's market this summer or fall. We've still got a bunch going on. And National Farmers Market Week happens to fall right in the heart of the Ohio summer harvest, so the eating is good, it's fresh, and it's at the diverse, or at the peak of diverseness right now. Sweet corn, tomatoes, melons, all the good stuff that you guys like. So, we hope to see you at a market. And now, I'd like to introduce you to Julianne Walker.
Council President Harding and Councilmember Tyson, all members of the council. My job is slightly different. I want to share with you very briefly, as a certified market manager, what the markets actually do and who they serve, because sometimes we think of farmers markets as being somewhat elitist, and some of them are. But a lot of them are changing quite rapidly, recognizing the diversity of population within the city of Columbus. And what we're learning is that food security is essential to economic development, to well-being, to educational attainment, et cetera, et cetera. And if we aren't able to provide nutrient-rich food at affordable prices in an accessible way, we can forget any kind of economic development for the city and the region. So, we are very thankful that you support the farmers market process. We're very thankful that you recognize the importance of the role that they do, and we also thankful on behalf of the producers, because I don't think we talk about them enough. And we don't recognize that there are some people who come to market as a community service. They literally don't count the pennies that they earn. There are others who are very serious and can corporatize as thoroughly as any major corporation. But there are some in between that are really a family, who really come from the community, who recognize their neighbors, and are very responsive to the nutritional needs of their neighbors. And so, they're really communities that we value, that we nurture, and that we support as we grow as a network ourselves. So, thank you very much for your support. I'm going to be even more, you know, President Harding knows, and I will actually say, come out to the Bronzeville Growers Market this Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at 925 Mount Vernon Avenue, and then, as your schedule allows, fill in with some of the others.
And Julianne, I was going to ask absolutely so for the farmer, farmers market managers to at least share a market and the time of the market, so. And you're, Julianne, so your market lasts until August, what?
The month of August, so the August 29th is the last date for the Bronzeville Growers Market, 925 Mount Vernon Avenue, every Thursday, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m.
My name is Sam Sharkey. Councilmembers, thank you so much for having all of us and supporting this resolution. I run the Pearl Market downtown. We have moved to the northern half of Pearl Alley and Gay Street this year. We're there Tuesday and Friday from 10:30 to 2:00 this year through October 11th. And at our market, you're not only supporting farmers and producers, helping to get that money back into the local economy, but you're also potentially funding brick-and-mortar businesses, local artisans, who are working to make our local community stronger as well. So, come out and support Pearl Market. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Landon Adams with the ever-growing Linden Farmers Market, 2830 Cleveland Avenue. We meet on Sundays from 12:00 to 3:00 through the first Sunday in September, so we look forward to seeing you all come out. We'll have an exercise party this after, or this Sunday, as part of the celebration for National Farmers Market Week. It's what you put in, what you do with your body, and what we do together as a community. Thank you.
And Landon, can you share, maybe, I don't know if Adam or whoever, any other individuals who are here with you from the, let me make sure I get this right, the Community of Caring Development Foundation, just to really share what this, the farmers market has meant for your community in terms of enhancing the work that you're already doing?
Yeah, I think to Julia Lynn's point, that some farmers markets kind of exist as pop-up grocery stores. People would come in, and they would, they would get their bread, they would get their pasta, they would get their honey, just like they would at a grocery store. And the Linden Farmers Market, we've really tried to create a community experience each time we meet, so it's not just about food. But really, culturally speaking, you can't just say anything is just about food. Food is really where we gather. The work of producers is growing. We've got some folks who were just growing in their backyard last year and now are producing and selling at the market. The Hardy Center, which is right across the street from where the market takes place, their students have been growing, and last Sunday, they came and sold some of their produce for the first time. So, it's, it's all the things that Julia Lynn said indicate a healthy community that's happening at the Linden Farmers Market.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming down. I'm going to give you the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Remy wants to say a few words.
So, my staff knows, and my family begrudgingly knows, that I love to come to the farmers markets. Certainly, at the Pearl Market last week, I saw you had Ohio State out there teaching cooking classes and doing some fun things, and I know, I call Linden kind of my, my home farmers market because it's so close to me, but certainly love to get out there on Sundays. I mean, these are just valuable resources, and we thank all of you. I want to thank Councilmember Tyson for her leadership in making sure that, that these things are operating throughout the city. It's a wonderful opportunity, and I tell you, when you get fresh vegetables like that, the way that they taste versus in the grocery store is, you know, second to none. So, thank you all for all that you do. You provide a valuable service for the city over the summer, and it's unfortunate we can't do it year-round. That would even make it better, but certainly thank you for everything.
Thank you. Cheryl, do you want to mention the farmers markets at Columbus Public Health and the dates and the times?
Yes, I will. So, Columbus Public Health is running their summer farmers markets. We offer three markets over the course of the summer. So, our first one kicked off this last Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the lawn of Columbus Public Health. We had over 1,800 visitors. We partnered with Recreation and Parks in the summer food program. We served over 500 meals to the youth that came out. So, it was a really outstanding market, and we'll do it again this Thursday and next Thursday. And so, those are great opportunities for you to come out and see a lot of our great producers and get your feet wet with some farmers markets before you head off to some of our others in the community. And I want to give Michelle White just a brief moment to tell you about the Clintonville Farmers Market, because we, she is market manager there.
Thanks, Cheryl. So, yeah, I manage the Clintonville Farmers Market. We have every Saturday, 9:00 to noon, right there at North High Street and West and Eden Road in Clintonville. We go all the way through November 23rd this year. And then, I also run the Burlington and Bexley Markets, which are on Thursday and Wednesdays respectively from 4:00 to 7:00. I know this is all hard to remember, so the good news is that we just launched a website called groweatohio.com. You can, they have an interactive farmers market map on there, so you can put in your zip code, and it'll pop up the markets that are close to you. So, it's a really good resource that we have needed for a long time and are happy to have. So, check out groweatohio.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you to each and every one of you for the work that you're doing in your communities. You certainly are making our communities better. You're enhancing the quality of life for all of our residents. Congratulations, and keep, keep doing what you're doing. You're making such a tremendous difference. And sometimes you think that a small project can't change a life. One person makes a difference, and each of you are making a difference in the lives of our families, and I just wish you just, just the best of luck as you continue to do all your wonderful work, and all I can do is also say is, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Go back to President Proton.
Thank you so much, President Harden. Would Director Rhonda Johnson please come to the podium? I have Resolution 0224X-2019 to recognize and thank Director Rhonda Johnson for her exemplary service as Education Director for the city of Columbus. I am so pleased to recognize Director Rhonda Johnson this evening upon her retirement, but I am not pleased that you are retiring. She will be deeply missed, and her service to the city of Columbus, its teacher- of Columbus, its teachers, its students, and our schools will carry on in so many ways. I have had the pleasure of working with Director Johnson as Chair of the Education Committee since I began my own service on council. Her wealth of knowledge is unmatched, and her drive to make a positive impact has been inspiring to me personally. It's fitting that tonight we will also be approving funding for the Early Start Columbus program later on our agenda. Director Johnson was instrumental in the implementation of Early Start Columbus, which has provided nearly $27 million in financial assistance to more than 4,500 children to attend high-quality pre-kindergarten classrooms since its launch in 2014, which is also when Director Johnson began at the city. I also want to note her service as President of the Columbus Education Association from 2004 to 2014, where she was the first woman and the first African-American to serve in that position. And her longtime service as a teacher at Columbus City Schools prior to that. One of the things I appreciate most about you, Director Johnson, is your work not just for students, although that is a primary focus, but on their support systems as well, their teachers and their families. You have helped launch partnerships with Columbus State Community College and Action for Children to provide an accelerated Child Development Associate Program for teachers already working with students in Columbus. These partnerships not only improve the quality of instruction that children receive, but they provide valuable career development training for the teacher. And we have partnered together to look at our neighborhoods to better understand the needs of families, barriers they experience, and how we can work through those challenges to provide access to quality early learning opportunities in every neighborhood. Your experience, your expertise, your insight, and your drive have helped lead the charge in all of these areas and more. And personally, I truly appreciate the chance to have, to have worked with you at all. Personally, your perspective for me was always my gut check on all kinds of issues related to education and our city broadly and its growth. I hope that you will still answer your phone following your retirement, because I know we will all have questions, just begging for some trademark Rhonda Johnson wisdom in their answer. I promise I won't call too much, of course. So Director Johnson, thank you again for your service, and congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Do my colleagues have any comments? Councilmember Remy?
Man, I think we started working together about 10 years ago, if I, if memory serves me correct. But certainly, thank you for all of your service, both as CEA President here in the city. You were always the voice of reason and listened to some, me get a little bit elevated about certain issues over time. And certainly, as I served on the various committees with Columbus City Schools, you know, I'm very passionate about, you know, the well-being of our, our school system. So thank you for all the things that you've been able to provide to me over the years. And like her, I probably still will call, I'll just make sure to keep it at a minimum. But we, we still very much value your advice and support. So thanks again, and have a lot of fun in your retirement.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. Director, Director Johnson, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you. I certainly admire you and the work that you have been doing all these years, supporting our children and giving our, from being at the Columbus City Schools to deciding after you retired there, and I mean, from the union to come to Columbus to help us. And your work has certainly been exemplary. And you will absolutely, your, just your smile, your style, and, and your sense of commitment to making sure that our kids have a healthy start to be, in terms of academically, to be able to move forward. And so I thank you for that. And on behalf of the many children who may never hear the name Rhonda Johnson, on behalf of them, I will say, thank you very much. Job well done in serving our children. I wish you the best. Enjoy retirement. Have a lot of fun. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. President Harden?
Thank you, Councilmember. Director Johnson, I echo everything that my colleagues have said. I think everyone on this dais, I know everyone on this dais looks up to you and have called you on the side to get your input. I hope they've had a chance to hang out with you outside of work, too, because you can see the well-rounded person, individual you are. We're going to miss you here at City Hall. But as everyone said, congratulations on a retirement well-served. Like Councilmember Tyson said, this is your second or third retirement, but you keep coming back. And we appreciate that. But this is definitely well-deserved. We will certainly miss you here, but congratulations.
The microphone is yours.
Thank you. President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, members of council, I am very grateful for this resolution. I am happy to be retiring. I'm going to try it again to see if it works. So I'm going to take a very long break. Feel free to call. I have the same cell phone number. But it has been wonderful to work here at City Hall. I've always been proud these last five years to say I work for the city, because I'm working for the residents of the city of Columbus, and I've always been very proud to do that. I have, my biggest accomplishment probably has been, there are two, I think, Early Start Columbus, the number of children, I hadn't thought about it until you said, the number of children that we've helped to provide a high-quality pre-K. Our first kids just finished the third grade. And so we're going to see how well they did. We have the data about how well they, they did on the third grade reading test. So this is going to be great. But I think my bigger accomplishment was putting together a really great team of people working with me, with Matt Semito as the Assistant Director, Sierra Adams as my policy advisor, and April Haynes as my executive assistant. They have been like my family. Probably, I'm more like the mom, no, probably the grandmom to them. So I really appreciate their support. I appreciate the support of council, the administration, my colleagues who serve with me on the mayor's cabinet. I've never met so many smart people being in the room at the same time. It has just been great. So I just want to leave with one quote to, this, this is what anchors me, and I always keep a card just kind of tattered, but this is a quote from John Dewey, who is probably the greatest educational philosopher. And he said, "What the best and wisest parent wants for his child, that must we want for all the children of the community. Anything less is unlovely, and left unchecked destroys our democracy." So thank you very much for the honor.
Thank you. I move for adoption.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Only note I have, I see up in the balcony, Boy Scouts from Troop 148, Mr. Richard and Alexander. You guys want to wave, say hello. Welcome to council chambers this evening. Are there any comments from elected officials? City Attorney, Deputy Chief, Deputy Auditor?
Yes.
Thank you, President Harden. City Auditor Kilgore asked that I communicate two items to you tonight in her absence. First, a document titled Guidelines for Debt Issuance Recommended by the City Auditor has been placed by the City Clerk in the formal communications to City Council. The city's debt guidelines are not statute, but represent the policies followed by the city when issuing debt. The current guidelines are updated for the following: The Federal Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017; Credit Support, where the city is enhancing another public entity's debt, as in the case of the Hilton Expansion Project; Credit Ratings, to formally document important metrics used in the rating agencies; and other minor updates to structure and language used in the policy. The City Auditor is available to answer any questions council may have regarding these guidelines. Secondly, Auditor Kilgore has an announcement about a new federal, a new city financial report. Columbus has a long history of establishing strong financial policies, which has led to years of financial stability. The city takes great pride in its timely financial reporting and transparency. But we are always striving to make this information more accessible and relevant to those who live, work, and conduct business in Columbus. As a result, Auditor Kilgore and I are proud to introduce a new report, the Popular Annual Financial Report, or PAFR. The PAFR is a reflection of our efforts to keep residents informed about how tax dollars are being spent. This non-technical report summarizes the financial activities of the city's funds as reported in the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We hope that users of the PAFR find this condensed financial summary easy to read, and that they come away with a better understanding of the city's programs and how they're funded and managed. You can find the PAFR on the City Auditor's website. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about these two items. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Auditor, have any questions for my colleagues?
Thank you.
At this time, I request the following ordinance to be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda. Could you please remove Ordinance 1999-2019 from the Administration Committee? Are there any other requests by members of council for removal? Seeing none, may I now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation?
Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 1685, 1729, and 2075-2019. Technology Committee Ordinance 2078-2019.
Seeing no speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda, the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 219X20, or excuse me, 222, 223, 225, and 2221X-2019. Finance Committee Ordinance is 1948, 2018, 2020, 2031, 2050, 2068, 2092, and 2096-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance 1883, 1885, 1886, 1887, 1888, 1935-2019. Public Safety Committee Ordinance 2126-2019. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 1847, 1881, and 1902-2019. Technology Committee Ordinance is 1442, 1808, 2051, and 2069-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 217X-2019. Ordinance is 1896, 1898, 2049, 29D, and 2093-2019. Housing Committee Ordinance is 1498, 1597, 2053, 2054, 2055, 2056, 2057, 2058, 2059, 2060, and 2074-2019. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee Ordinance is 2015, 2046, and 2081-2019. Economic Development Committee Ordinance 2091-2019. Environment Committee Ordinance 2130-2019. Administration Committee Ordinance is 1989, 2000, 2003, 2006, 2076, 2097, 2124, 2125-2019. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 1918, 1967, 1991-2019. Small and Minority Business Ordinance 2042-2019. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0127, 128, 129, 130, 132, 133, 134, 135, 136, 137, 138-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, I have approval for these items as needs consent action. Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorrance?
Yes.
Ms. Faber? Mr. Remy? Ms. Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of 2081-2019, on which I am abstaining.
President Harden?
Yes, consent agenda items are passed with the noted exceptions. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come for council is the Finance Committee. President Pro Tem chairs that committee. Floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Finance, we have Ordinance 1737-2019 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for automotive parts, thereby allowing the Fleet Management Division to purchase needed equipment, to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the Fleet Management Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. During 2019, the Fleet Management Division is budgeted to spend $4.5 million for parts to keep the city's fleet of approximately 6,000 vehicles in operation. Fleet Management processes more than 40,000 work orders annually for all city vehicles and equipment, and requires purchase orders with more than 400 vendors to help meet this need. Emergency action is being considered to ensure an uninterrupted supply of parts to keep city vehicles running, including police, fire, and refuse collection vehicles. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have Ordinance 1785-2019 to authorize the City Auditor to enter into contracts with OnActuate Consulting Incorporated Knowledge Services, Navigator Management Partners, and/or such additional consultant vendors as may be necessary for upgrading Dynamics AX 2012 to Dynamics 365 Finance and Operations, to provide funding for the upgrade of Dynamics 2012, and support and maintenance of Dynamics 365 Finance and Operations System, to authorize the City Auditor to appropriate and transfer funds from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Auditor Geo Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $1,900,000 from the Auditor Geo Bond Fund for a total expenditure of $1,900,000, and to declare an emergency. The city implemented Microsoft Dynamics AX, commonly referred to as DAX, as its financial management system in 2016. Approximately 600 active users and 7,000 vendor contacts utilize the system. This project will upgrade the current system to the next generation of financial management software, Dynamics 365, and provide ongoing support for the system. These contracts for ongoing support will be renewable annually, subject to approval by City Council. Emergency action is being considered in order to complete the project in a timely manner to allow for proper accounting of the city's financial system. Seeing no questions from colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have Ordinance 1963-2019 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract with Coupa Incorporated for the continuation of hosted software solutions and professional services related to the Acquire Marketplace, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Chapter 329 of the City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $188,000 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Acquire Marketplace is an electronic catalog administered by the Purchasing Office. It is made available to city staff, allowing them to purchase items from universal term contracts. Currently, there are more than 300 contracts in the electronic catalog with more than 4 million distinct items. The purpose of the proposed, of the proposed contract will be, or, excuse me, the term of the proposed contract will be one year, with two one-year renewal options, dependent upon City Council approval of funding. The waiver of competitive bidding is requested to continue use of the city's current financial planning systems. Additionally, the Acquire Marketplace software has the only known catalog with real-time search capability. Emergency action is considered to prevent interruptions in the city's use of its purchasing system. At the end of the current contract, there will be an opportunity to submit an RFP for future catalog services. Seeing no questions from colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
May I move to the Recreation and Parks Committee?
Please.
Thank you. We have Ordinance 2098-2019 to appropriate funds to the Department of Recreation and Parks in support of summer educational programming for Columbus students, and to declare an emergency. President Harden, I'd like to turn the floor over to you to share more, please, about this funding and program.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. I'm going to call up Dorsey, Dorsey Hager, Executive Director of the Central Ohio Buildings Trade. Mr. Hager, welcome back to council. This is a new partnership between council, Recreation and Parks, and the Central Ohio Building and Construction Trade Council. Approximately, approximately 20 Columbus youth ages 12 to 15 will participate in a four-day camp experience, where they'll get hands-on training with electrical, carpentry, sheet metal, and bricklaying trades. The goal is to expose youth to the skilled trades as junior apprentices. By the end of the camp, they will know what the apprenticeship program is and what the pathway to future employment in the trades looks like. Youth will also have a better understanding of what classes they might want to take in high school, so they can be prepared to enter an apprenticeship program. This is the first year of this partnership. I'm looking forward to hearing back from the kids, from the partners, and seeing if there is opportunity to expand this in the future, to put more young people on the path towards the middle class. I certainly want to thank Chair Brown for her partnership. I thank Dorsey and all those folks who have worked over the last months to make this program possible. I'll turn the floor over to you, Dorsey.
All right. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, President Harden, for giving me the opportunity to speak in council chambers again. I know you and I and Chief of Staff Mike Brown have talked about this for about a year and kind of brainstormed and came up with some ideas. The Columbus Building Trades is doing everything we can to meet the growing demand for construction workers in Columbus and the central Ohio market. It's not just the many jobs that the city of Columbus has, Fire Station 35, the Linden Rec Center, but also the jobs that the county have, the new Forensic Science Center. I wrote that down with no notes. I didn't call it a morgue this time, so they're really picky down the street about Forensic Science Center. I don't know why, but, and also the new county jail. Also, you know, we have Facebook and Google on the northeast end of town, so there's a growing demand for a lot of good-paying jobs with benefits, good wages here in Columbus and central Ohio, and we're trying to meet those demands. With some of our apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship programs, we're sincerely doing that while continuing to diversify our workforce to resemble the community in which we live, work in. One of the things that we talked about, like you said, is we talked about exposing young people to the building trades because once they get in high school, maybe their path is already set and they haven't been exposed to all the opportunities that are out there in front of them. So we came up with the idea to come up with a program through Parks and Recs this year, a one-week pilot program, which will be August 10th to the 14th, to give 25 youngsters, middle school age, seventh, eighth, ninth grade, the opportunity to visit four of our training centers. One is the Electrical Trades Center, the other is the Sheet Metal Workers, the other is the Bricklayers, and the other is the Carpenters. All state-of-the-art training centers ran by the members' money, no tax dollars at all, where we offer free tuition and training to post-high-school graduates so that they can learn a valuable trade and earn a good skill, a lucrative trade that can pay them anywhere from $50,000 to $125,000 a year plus benefits. So we want to get out into the middle schools. We're trying this as a one-week pilot this year to see how the kids enjoy it. Hopefully, everything goes great, and maybe next summer, we can expand it to four to six weeks. So what would the day in the life of a junior apprenticeship participant look like? They're going to get picked up at the Recreation Center in their neighborhood. They're going to come to the Electrical Trades Center on Monday, where they'll be fed a meal for breakfast. They'll go over some basic training. They'll bend some conduit. They'll strike an arc. They'll make a little something that they can take home with them. They'll break for lunch. They'll do some more hands-on stuff, and then they'll return to the Recreation Center about 3:30 or 4 o'clock. But the one thing that's came out of this in the last couple of weeks, I wanted to update you on, President Harden, is I think it's great that a lot of members of our community and the city of Columbus are going to get to see that these training centers exist, many right in their own neighborhoods and right here in the city, and they're going to be exposed to all these wonderful opportunities here. That's so good for all of them, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hager. I can speak from personal knowledge. My little brother is an electrician with IBW, and he is on track to soon make more than his big brother council president. But I can truly say, as a kid, as a family growing up in the South Side, we were not exposed to the trades, and my younger brother was off track and, by the grace of God, got back on track. And I can say that the trades have given him a great shot at living the American dream and being a part of the middle class. But the thing is, you can't be what you don't see. And so that's why this program is so important, so that we expose our young people to these real job opportunities. So we appreciate the partnership, and I'll turn it back over to President Pro Tem.
Councilmember Dorans?
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment both the Council President, President Pro Tem Brown, and certainly the Recreation Parks Department and the Columbus Building Trades for this incredible program. One thing I wanted to note why also this is so important is that nationally, we're looking at close to 20% of the construction workforce retiring in the next 10 to 15 years. So there is not only the immense opportunity today, but there's an immense opportunity in the future, and starts with exposing these young people today to this career path. It's a direct career path of the middle class. You know, we like to call it the other four-year degree, and personally, it's another four-year degree that comes with no student loan debt. And as a lawyer, I can tell you, that's pretty great. So just want to compliment my colleagues for their leadership on this, and certainly the Building Trades and the Recreation Parks Department for bringing this all together, and certainly excited to see what the pilot brings, and hopefully, next year, we get to expand this and certainly expose more students to this, so that, again, as those retirements happen, we've got kids from all across the city of Columbus that have this as a career option, and certainly a career option that allows folks to raise a family, make a good wage, have retirement benefits, and have healthcare. So I just want to say thanks to everyone for their thoughts and their ability to bring this together.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorans. Thank you for your leadership. President Harden, any other comments or questions?
Just one last thing I omitted, real quick. On the last day of the class, also, I mean, throughout the four days, we're going to be giving these young people things that they can take home, that they can show their parents, that talk about so many of the things that we've talked about here tonight, so that way their parents can be exposed to those programs too. And if possible, their parents, their grandparents, aunts, uncles, whatever, can come on the last day on Thursday afternoon for a small graduation ceremony. And you know, at building trades ceremonies, we always have cake and pizza, so they're actually pretty fun. But they can come down and see those too, and we're going to sit down with each one of their participants and let them kind of give us some feedback on what they thought, how the week went. And if it's a person that, you know, maybe this didn't appeal to them, hey, that's great. But if it's somebody that it did appeal to them, then they're going to get the opportunity to sit down with one of our training directors, our coordinators, our counselors, talk about the math and science classes they should be taking in high school, so that way, as soon as they graduate, they can be able to walk right into an apprenticeship or pre-apprenticeship program and get on that path to the middle class. So I think it's a good thing for residents of the city of Columbus. We want to thank you for your leadership and looking out for this. Yep. Thank you all.
Thanks.
President Harden, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 2128-2019 to authorize the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks to continue its grant agreement with My Project USA in support of the Wedgewood Youth Soccer Program, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative sub-fund, and to declare an emergency. In 2017, My Project USA established a soccer team in the Wedgewood Village apartment community. The neighborhood is home to approximately 2,000 children who benefit from access to programming that provides a safe environment, positive role models, and an outlet for physical activity. The team was a tremendous success. Interest and demand soon led to the development of a year-round program. Last year, city council provided financial support to expand the program with the addition of multiple new teams that engaged additional children each week. This funding is a continuation of that support for the youth soccer program in the Wedgewood community. A structured and safe environment for kids to play soccer provides a platform to engage with them, provide them with positive role models and guidance, and empower them to make their community safer. I attended a celebration last year because one of the teams won the championship in the intramural league of many different teams around Columbus, Ohio, and it was really cool to see the pride on all the children's faces from having gotten that far. So I am pleased to continue supporting this work, and I'm pleased to my colleagues for their help and support. I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Council President, may I move to education?
Please.
We have ordinance 1940-2019 to authorize and direct the Director of Education to enter into contracts with high-quality pre-kindergarten organizations, to provide educational services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,760,508 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. This funding is for the Early Start Columbus program, which expands access to high-quality pre-K classrooms for children. This is accomplished through partnerships with Columbus City Schools and community-based providers. In short, we're providing scholarships to four-year-olds to attend high-quality pre-K when their parents otherwise wouldn't be able to afford it. These dollars are leveraged with funds from ODE and ODJFS to make every dollar stretch as far as possible and serve the maximum number of children. Early Start providers have demonstrated their ability to provide a high-quality pre-K education by being rated at least three stars in the state's Step Up to Quality rating system. We know that quality early education significantly improves literacy, language, and math skills. Children who reach kindergarten academically ready are more likely to succeed in school and throughout life. Additionally, having a safe place to drop your kids off each day helps parents secure employment and advance their own careers and earnings, ultimately providing increased economic security for families in Columbus today. That is the basis of our efforts to expand access to high-quality pre-kindergarten opportunities through Early Start Columbus. And I say this a lot, but I truly believe that funding for early childhood education is one of the best investments we can make as a city and as a society if we want to grow and succeed. I'll also remind you of our moral obligation, as Director Rhonda Johnson so aptly put the quote from John Dewey. Again, it's a fitting tribute to her that upon her retirement, we're passing this ordinance this evening. Thank you for the foundation you helped establish through these investments and our kids, Director Johnson. We promise to do right by the groundwork you laid and indeed to do even more for kids in the years ahead. Your team will make sure we measure what we do as well. Just as you said, the data is important. If you don't measure it, did you really do it? And with that, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
President Harden, with your permission and the permission of Councilmember Dorans as the committee chair, I have one ordinance in neighborhoods committees to speak to. Is that all right? Ordinance 2129-2019. I would like to invite Lori Fisher and other guests from the South Side ID Project to the podium as I read this ordinance, to enter into a grant agreement with Community Development for All People in the amount of $8,500 for its South Side ID Project and to declare an emergency. The South Side ID Project was created to help Columbus residents access birth certificates and state identification cards at no cost. The need for these documents was identified within the community as a substantial barrier to accessing basic necessities such as employment, housing, banking, and education. Even access to the ballot box is jeopardized without proper identification documents. The South Side ID Project estimates that 75% of those whom it has helped to date are women seeking birth certificates for their children and grandchildren for school enrollment. In light of this, this ordinance is being considered as an emergency so that we can expand the program before the school year starts. We expect that this funding will allow Community Development for All People to serve hundreds of additional individual families, individuals and families who need this resource now. In addition to young students starting school, vulnerable populations such as seniors, domestic violence survivors, those who are homeless or returning from incarceration or living in poverty are among the most likely to lack identification documents and also the least likely to be able to afford replacements. This is a great example tonight of grassroots activism from one of our community partners to help create pathways out of poverty, and I'm excited to be able to support and expand that work through this funding. I know that originally, the idea was germinated at the United Way Neighborhood Leadership Academy, so I'm so excited to see that level of community partnership and that we can support residents' vision in improving their own community. Lori, thank you for being here. Please share more about the great work happening through South Side ID.
Sure. Thank you so much to all council members for allowing us to be here today and for supporting this initiative. As you mentioned, it was born out of the Neighborhood Leadership Academy, and we were so excited to be able to have such an impact immediately in the community by providing those necessary documents for those in need. My colleagues here with me may want to say a little bit more about the program, but it personally has been very rewarding to be a part of something that actually has a real impact in the community. I got involved because I wanted to make a difference, and this program has allowed us to do just that. And with your support, we can continue to expand, not only in our community, but we hope to take it citywide. So thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Anything else?
Well, good evening. Thank you very much, Council President Pro Tem Brown. We are very grateful for your support, for the support of city council here tonight. To date, South Side ID Project has accepted almost 300 applications, and while our inception was in November of 2018, it's only been the last few months that we've ramped up the process. So we accept applications every Friday at Community Development for All People, 946 Parsons Avenue, between the hours of 2:30 p.m. and 4:30 p.m. And while we've accepted almost 300 applications, that's over 400 documents. And as you mentioned, many of those, roughly 75%, are women, moms, grandmas, aunties, who are in need of documents not only for themselves, but to ensure that their children, grandchildren, family members are able to go to school, to Columbus Public Schools this fall. So as you're aware, though, the reality is, is it's much greater than that. We're trying to work to ensure that residents, not only in the South Side of Columbus, but throughout central Ohio, can participate in the process by which decisions are made affecting our community. Of course, one of those processes is voting, so lack of ID prevents individuals in our community from being able to vote, but it also prevents them from being able to access bank accounts and housing and jobs. So we're very excited. While we have primarily focused on the South Side, we have officially gone citywide. These funds will allow us, of course, to serve more families in central Ohio, and we have new partnerships currently in the works in the moment now. So we're looking forward to what will hopefully be a very long and prosperous relationship with the city and are very grateful for your support.
Okay. I want to in particular thank Councilmember Remy, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Dorans for co-sponsoring this and making the ordinance possible tonight, and Councilmember Dorans for advancing it in your committee. So thank you again. Are there any comments from my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you so much. President Harden, with your permission again and with the permission of Councilmember Remy as the committee chair, I'd like to, I have one ordinance to speak to in administration, ordinance 1999. Thank you. As I read the ordinance, I'd like to invite President Angela Williams with AFSMI Local 1632 and Vice President Amy Frye to the podium. Ordinance 1999-2019 is to accept memorandum of understanding number 201710, updated 2019, executed between representatives of the city of Columbus and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI Ohio Council 8, Local 1632, that extends paid caregiver leave benefits until the end of the current collective bargaining contract dated April 1st, 2017, through March 31st, 2019, and to declare an emergency. In 2017, the city of Columbus implemented a paid family leave policy for all of its employees. I want to thank the human resources team for all of the help and effort there. The policy covered the needs of new parents in a new parental leave benefit, but it also included a two-year pilot for paid caregiver leave. I am proud that Columbus led the way on this. We were the first city in the Midwest and the third city nationally to offer a comprehensive paid family leave policy that included time to care for a sick or aging loved one. Caregiver leave recognizes the reality that many families face. When a loved one is sick, someone needs to be there to care for them. Without the flexibility to take time from work to provide this care, people are faced with extremely difficult choices between sacrificing their income or even losing a job and taking care of a loved one in need. The importance of caregiver leave is evident in demographic trends for the future. 10,000 Americans turn 65 every day, but as well as present needs in so many families. Today in Ohio, 1.1 million people are caring for a sick or aging loved one. 1.1 million people in our state. And more often than not, this responsibility falls to women in a family. In fact, MetLife did a study on the connection between lifetime earnings and the number of caregiving responsibilities shouldered by women. What did they find? Women lose on average $350,000 in lifetime earnings due to their disproportionate number of caregiving duties that fall to them. Do you want to close the gender pay gap? Look no farther than comprehensive paid family leave as a place to start. Tonight, we are extending the two-year pilot for the city's paid caregiver leave policy to make this a standard benefit for all six bargaining units representing city employees. As we work to give families the tools they need to succeed in our city, it is important that we set an example for other employers through the policies we establish for our city workers. Thank you, President Williams, for being here tonight to talk about how the city's caregiver leave policy has impacted your membership and your workers.
Thank you. On behalf of Vice President Amy Frye and Chief Stuart for Public Services, Mark Donaldson, and the members of AFSMI Local 1632, I would like to thank President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, council for this opportunity to speak on this matter. The caregiver pay leave has been a great program for AFSMI Local 1632 employees. The pilot program is currently posted on the AFSMI Local 1632 website. I have instructed Vice President Frye to keep the website updated at all times if any new information comes along that our members can know about, can be informed on of the program. Regarding the use of the program, I personally know of several employees who have used the program, and it has helped resolve their current leave problem. A few examples of employees being helped after the union assist them regarding the program are a single mother with an adult daughter with a critical illness, and all FMLA was exhausted. exhausted; a husband who wife was in a head-on car collision and FMLA was no longer available; and an employee who primary caregiver for his mother, aging mother, who suffered from a critical illness, again, FMLA was no longer available, was used, exhausted. All of these employees in each case have returned to work at this time, and which I believe is that the city's goal and the union is that employees return to work without missing any extra time or pay. I'd like to say thank you again for this opportunity to speak on this great program and this matter. Also, just want to say that I reached out to some of the friends, employees that I know that was in use this program, and just want to mention that caregiving doesn't stop just because you take off time for a couple of weeks, six weeks. They're actually told me, Sir President Williams, we can't be there because I have to be there for my wife in the evening because the person I have there to assist during the day has to leave when I get off of work. So, it continues. It's a continued process. But thanks again for allowing us to be here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Finally, President Harden, I have one more item and rules and reference that I'd like to quickly speak to at this time.
Okay.
This is my last ordinance, and I thank you for your accommodation of a packed agenda this evening. I have ordinance 2044-2019 to amend and repeal various sections of chapters 321, 323, 325, 327, and Title 11 of the Columbus City Codes relating to deposits, bonds, and investments in order to update language and remove references to the Office of the Sinking Fund and to declare an emergency. These changes were recommended by the city's investment advisor and were reviewed and authorized at a joint meeting of the Depository Commission and Treasury Investment Board in May. In addition to removing references to the sinking fund, these changes update other outdated language in the code, including gender-specific references to the treasurer, and provide more flexibility for the city investments to improve their performance. Emergency action is being considered to implement these changes as soon as possible. Questions? I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening, I have ordinance 2028-2019 to authorize, direct the city auditor to transfer $5,958,392.88 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Fire Safety Bond Fund. To authorize the appropriation of said funds, to waive the competitive provisions of the Columbus City Codes, Chapter 329, to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to enter contracts with and issue purchase orders to Subson Corporation for the purchase of one aerial platform ladder truck in the amount of $1,381,924 and two Monarch Custom Pompers in the amount of $1,256,166.38. Horton Emergency Vehicles for the purchase of 10 EMS transport vehicles in the amount of $2,829,410. Stryker emergency equipment for the purchase of 10 ambulance cots in the amount of $421,728. And Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the purchase of communications equipment in the amount of $69,570.40. To amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to authorize the expenditure of $5,958,392.88 from the Safety Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. I would ask our Director Pettit to speak to the issue of bid waiver request.
President Harden, Safety Chair Brown, members of council. The Division of Fire, in conjunction with Fleet, established an apparatus replacement schedule to ensure that we have safe and reliable equipment for responding to requests for service. While each year we try to purchase a good balance of apparatus types, this year's capital purchase concentrates on medic vehicles due to that group having more vehicles reaching end-of-service life. The 10 Stryker power cots will be installed in the medics to help reduce injuries and firefighter fatigue, as well as increasing safety for the patient. It should be noted that this year's purchase includes a number of cost-saving measures. The pumper specifications were updated and reduced the base price by over $40,000 each. The Division established a direct buy plan with Stryker and saved approximately $7,000 per cot. The Motorola purchase also represents a direct buy program, which was established several years ago. Additionally, Horton gives us a volume discount for buying a large number of medic vehicles. Now, the Stryker EMS equipment, the Division is in need to purchase Stryker ambulance cots for each of the EMS transport vehicles being ordered from Horton Emergency Vehicles. While in the past, these cots have been included in the specifications along with other EMS equipment that comes included on the vehicle, it has been discovered that buying directly from the manufacturer will result in significant savings to the city. Therefore, a waiver of the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, is necessary for this purchase as the state term schedule in process for these ambulance cots has not yet been finalized.
Also, for the members of this council, last year, we averaged approximately 120 injuries from moving patients by our fire division, so these new cots should hopefully improve on the quality of care for the patient as well as for our firefighters. If there are no additional questions, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Also, we have tonight ordinance 2141-2019 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter to an agreement with the Franklin County Court of Common Pleas, Division of Domestic Relations, and Juvenile Branch to accept a grant award to pay for the cost of running a mentorship program by the Columbus Division of Police, to authorize the appropriation of $303,298 from the unappropriate balance of the general government grant fund and to declare an emergency. This program is also referred to as TEENS and Police Service Academy, also known as TAPS. I move for a passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods Committee. The committee is chaired by Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. The first piece of legislation I have in Neighborhoods is ordinance number 2111-2019 to authorize an appropriation within the Neighborhoods Initiative sub-fund for the Department of Neighborhoods in support of the 2019 National Night Out programming and declare emergency. As you heard earlier from Councilmember Brown, National Night Out, this year is being celebrated next Tuesday, August 6th, which enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. This year, we'll have more than 117 community events that are planned throughout the city, including live music, porch light vigils, and cookouts. With this funding, through the help of my colleague and co-sponsor, Councilmember Manuel Remy, and the Department of Neighborhoods under the leadership of Director Carly Williams-Scott, area commissions and civic associations will be eligible to apply for funding to help defray the cost to celebrate the values of National Night Out. With that, I'll let Director Williams-Scott speak a little bit to the process.
Thank you, Chair Dorans, Council President Harden, members of council. Just want to give a quick overview. We have an expedited application process this year for National Night Out funds. We have an online form, and each applicant will be asked to briefly share with us their plan for National Night Out activities, estimated attendance, and itemize illustrating how they intend to spend the grant funds. They will also be asked to submit a W-9 form. The deadline for these forms is this Wednesday, July 31st, at 5:00 PM. The form can be accessed online through the Department of Neighborhoods website at Columbus, For more information and to apply, you can see the website, or you can call our office and ask for Gil Gray at 614-645-1950. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I'd like to recognize my colleague, Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dorans, and thank you to Director Williams-Scott. This is an exciting night. As someone that put together these National Night Outs for many, many years up in Northland, I know that these grants will be very helpful to try to defray some of the costs associated with the evening. Some of these, as we know, are big deals around town. I think Hilltop has one of the largest ones, and Lisa Boggs has been planning this for months now. And certainly, but there's plenty of them around. 117 of them. I think last year, my team and I got to about, I think, eight or nine of them last year. It's kind of a competitive night to see how many we could hit up. But it's a great time for community, and so we certainly look forward to getting that $15,000 out the door to help as many of the 117 as possible. And thank you to, again, to Director Williams-Scott for helping put this together and making sure that our community is served.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Certainly myself looking forward to being out at a lot of these events next week. Do any of my colleagues have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. President Harden, with your permission, I'd like to move on to rules and reference.
Please.
Thank you. Rules and reference, I have, first of all, I'd like to invite the speakers who are here for this ordinance to come forth. Ordinance number 1947-2019 to enact the new section 311.23 of the Columbus City Code in order to create the Mideast Area Commission and declare emergency. On passage of tonight's ordinance, the City of Columbus will welcome our 21st Area Commission and the Mideast Area Commission. In 2004, a group of eight small civic associations in the area of Columbus between Bexley and Whitehall came together to form the Mideast Area Community Collaborative, commonly known as the MAC, in a cooperative effort to improve the neighborhoods. Since then, the MAC has grown to a collaborative of 17 organizations with outstanding reputations of neighborhood advocacy and become the primary voice in advising and facilitating communication, understanding, and cooperation between neighborhood groups, developers, and the City of Columbus. In the summer of 2017, members of the MAC met with the newly-formed Department of Neighborhoods to explore the possibility of forming an area commission. After nearly two years, three petitions and tireless negotiations by the community leadership in the MAC neighborhoods and the Department of Neighborhoods, a final petition was submitted to the city clerk in May of 2019 for the formation of the Mideast Area Commission. This effort will formalize and codify the Mideast Area Commission as the official neighborhood organization to afford citizen participation in the decision-making and advisory capacity to the City of Columbus. We'd like to recognize and congratulate all of the members of the Mideast Area Commission Task Force for their hard work in completing this long overdue accomplishment. I'll have some of these members introduce themselves here in a moment. At this time, I'd like to congratulate Quay Barnes for leading this effort and invite her, David Martin, and Mark Kraus, and the rest of the representatives from the neighborhood organizations who are already up here to speak here this evening. Would certainly like to recognize first David Martin.
Thank you, Council President Harden and Councilmember Dorans and the rest of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak to you tonight about the area commission. As the former task force member, co-chair of the proposed Berwick Eastmore Area Commission, it was my great honor to work alongside the members of the Mideast Area Commission Task Force to develop the petition you're here to consider tonight. When our two groups began this process nearly two years ago, we each had different visions for representation for the Mideast. While the visions may have been different, the goals always remain the same. Create an organization that was representative of our community's diversity, which has been the fundamental strength since the founding more than 90 years ago. Develop a communication and planning structure that provides our members, civic associations, the tools they need to develop and achieve a vision for the future of their neighborhoods and to shepherd those visions through the city processes that turn them into realities. After many long months, it became clear that our task force's hope to achieve was no different from the MAC. In the end, we found that the best path forward for our community was the marriage of the two proposals. In Quay and the rest of the MAC, we found a partner that was willing to find a compromise that met our goals while eliminating the concerns that were the primary reasons for our independent proposal in the beginning. Our first compromise proposal, our final compromise proposal, was supported by nearly all of the members of our civic associations. While it is with great sadness and regret that the sole civic association that will be left out of the new Mideast is my very own, I know that the organization that we will have created will truly be a catalyst for a brighter future for the Mideast. Lastly, I'd like to take a moment to thank some very specific people. First, David Hui and Lynn La Cour from the Department of Neighborhoods. Without their guidance and incredible attentiveness to our situation, we would not be here today. Second is my co-chair from the BEAC, Mark Kraus. Without his support, I am sure that I would be here with far less hair than I have now. His level-headedness and insight was invaluable over the last two years. Last, but certainly not least, is Quay Barnes. She has been the keystone of the Mideast for many years. I could not be more disappointed than I am at not having the opportunity to serve on the new area commission with her, and I know that she will remain the light that will guide our community to a brighter future. Thank you, Quay.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. First of all, I'd like to thank God that we're finally here. We've been a collaboration acting as a commission for 15 years. The Mideast Area Community Collaborative or MAC was established in 2004 by that guy, Napoleon Bell, our then-police liaison officer. He started with only eight neighborhood civics and block watchers. Napoleon had a vision of neighborhoods with similar concerns coming together to work on solutions for a common good. We thrive on our diversity. We were and are neighborhoods of different incomes and educational levels, housing stock, racial, religious, cultural, and age-level differences. The MAC objective is to improve communication between our communities and to increase the efficiency of resources and activities to better serve each one of these members. The MAC seeks to show unity and strength through numbers. Some initiatives that have been undertaken by the MAC have become policies that are now citywide. Examples include closing Motel 1, which led to a policy of how quickly and efficiently the city can now close nuisance establishments. A more recent policy concerning our Mayfair Apartments created a new and broad procedures for the city by the city attorney's office on how to deal with negligent landlords. And we helped revise code procedures to shorten enforcement process on such silly violations such as high grass and parking on the grass. Also during that time, we organized the Main Street Special Improvement District. We're the only city in the city that was not initiated by the city. The MAC believes in community building. One of the major goals of the MAC organization is to have all of our neighborhoods within the MAC boundaries to be represented by civic association. And to that goal, the eight that were started by Napoleon have now been expanded to 16, and we have only two more that are unestablished. We have enjoyed great relationships and have utmost respect for code enforcement, Columbus Police and Fire, Recreation and Park, public service departments. Thank you, Public Health Department, for celebrating one events in our area, as well as the city attorney's and mayor's office. We thank you all. To the Department of Neighborhoods, we thank you for your guidance through this process, and in particular to Lynn La Cour, our Far East Pride Center manager, who supported both sides of us during negotiations and is still considering encouraging us all. To all of you, we extend our greatest thanks for your continued support. To David Martin and Mark Kraus of the Berwick Eastmore Task Force, this road was not always easy, and not having Eastmore, one of our founding neighborhoods, not be with us today is a loss that we deeply feel. But you negotiated in good faith and with integrity, which was much appreciated. And lastly, thank you, Napoleon Bell, for your vision that has brought us thus far. So, even though the word "community" will not be in our new name, being a commission will not change our core values, for which are, each neighborhood that you see here will continue to sit at the table. Each neighborhood that you see here will make its own decisions about its internal matters. This commission will be operated from the bottom up, not the top down. Support will be offered to the commission to a neighborhood only when they request it. This could be in the form of support letters, attendance to hearings, calling mass meetings to raise awareness for their issues. Our strength is represented behind the people behind me. These are leaders of great integrity. They are intelligent, insightful, innovative, and compassionate. They care deeply for where they live, but they extend themselves to neighborhoods beyond them. I am truly, I am truly honored. I am truly honored to have worked with each of them. And at this time, I would like a leader from each civic association, or heck, all of them, to say their name and state their organization at this time.
Good evening. I'm Felicia Saunders, and I'm the president for the East Haven Civic.
Good evening. I'm Terrell Spencer, president of the Livingston Heights Place Civic Association.
Good evening. Gregory Lee, vice president of Berwick Civic Association.
Good evening. Donna Jones, proud president of Leewood Gardens Neighborhood Association.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Black. I'm president of the Berwick Civic Association.
Shirley Marshall, president of the East Hampton Block Watch Civic Association.
Pamela Reeves, president of Barnett Main Civic Association.
I'm Herb Tolliver. I represent the East Main Street Special Improvement District.
I'm Victor Flower from the Mayfair Peacekeepers Civic Association.
Patricia Powell, Mayfair Peacekeepers Block Watch.
I'm Greg Munger, president of Northeastmore Civic Association.
Andy Banas, Will Sparks Civics Association.
Core Assignments, president of the Southeastmore Civic Association.
Kim Watkins, Beechwood Civic Pinecrest Park Coordinator.
Lois Mayer, Berwyny Civic Association and Block Watch.
Brenda Smith, Thunderbird Dakers.
Hi, Sharon Pantellas, Pinecrest Civic Association and Block Watch.
Hi, Judith Cobb Howard, Leewood Garden Association.
Hi, good evening. Jennifer Sanders, Treasurer, Berwick Civic Association.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mark Kraus to the podium to say a few words as well.
Thank you. As I put some notes together, it was hard to not overuse the word "final" in "finally." But I wanted to say that as David is too modest to publicly recognize his own efforts as his co-chair, I want to take pleasure in doing so. David worked tirelessly in directing and navigating us through the process of becoming an area association. It necessitated, first, being a strong proponent of becoming an association, then defending our cause against opposition, and then, now, finally, being sufficiently open-minded and pragmatic, both as individuals and as a group, to reach a neighborly compromise that will benefit all parties for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. I want to, again, thank this group. Again, you all alluded to it, this has not had been an easy process throughout it, and to see folks up here today, I know I speak for my colleagues when we talk about how important area commissions are to the city and how important it is to the neighborhoods that we want to see thrive. And so, thank you for doing that work and truly being that voice of all the different communities that you've just talked about here. So, thank you for the hard work, and thank you for the work that comes now, because the work's not over. And I appreciate everyone stepping forward to do that service. We'd also like to thank Director William Scott and her team for getting us to today. Again, without them, we would not be here, and really appreciate all the work that they've done. I think we all look forward to working with you all in your new capacity as the Mideast Area Commission. So, do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember Remy.
I'd like to commend all of you. I think I was newly put on council about 19 months ago, and a bunch of you came in to talk about this, and I know how big of a commitment it was to work through all the challenges to get here. You guys are our first line of representation of the city on the streets, and so, being that I was in your shoes at one point in time, I know what the commitment is and certainly know the type of volunteerism it takes to be successful. And so, we really thank you for working this out, for creating such a dynamic area commission. I'm really excited to work with all of you in that official capacity, and so, thank you for all the hard work. Thank you to Director William Scott, and of course, my colleague, Councilmember Dorans. We appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorans. I would like to take a moment and just say to Napoleon Bell, who worked tirelessly many, many, many years ago to try and put this all together as a police officer, working with all of you in the proper way about trying to make this all happen. Otherwise, believe me, it would not have occurred if he hadn't started the seed a long, long time ago. And I want to take a moment to say thank you, Nancy. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorans. I, too, just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. This certainly has been a long, hard process, but it has gotten you to this point. And so, I have to, first of all, thank Director Carla Williams Scott for her work in working with Quay, David, Mark, and each of the civic presidents and leadership to get us to this point. Certainly, I want to thank, it's always glad, it's great to hear Quay give the history of how this really got started. And so, again, I would say thank you to Napoleon for having the insight to move this forward and to think outside the box to make this happen. But I clearly just, I live in that area, and I just want to say, I attended a meeting, and I'll just share that it has been tough getting here. And I have to say a special thank you to David and to Mark. David and Mark, thank you, thank you, thank you. I know it's very difficult to work this hard and then not have part of your organization be a part of it, but this is what true leadership is all about. You stuck with it, and you made it happen. Regardless of whether you're a part of it or not, you made it happen. And so, to each and every one of you, thank you. We're very pleased to work with this commission, and we know that a lot of great things are going to continue to happen, and people are going to come out and ask you to continue to support what they're doing. But it's also great to sit here and see the diversity of this commission. And just to stand here and see you all working together to have accomplished something that will be, this is the first commission, and you are the legacy, you're our legacy, and everyone that comes after you will stand on your shoulders. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. And with that, I am very proud to move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass. Congratulations.
President Harden, would you like to break the zoning?
Yes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
To recess, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Recession. Regular meeting number 41 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee, and all members serve on the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council variances, zoning variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please raise your right hand. Please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Now, I also want to share that the rules of council, to be able to speak at council, if you are willing to give any public comment, that you have to have your speaker slip in before 6:30. So, anyone that put their speaker slip in after 6:30 will not have an opportunity to be able to speak this evening. And so, now I will begin the ordinances. The first ordinance is 1619-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of section 3332.035R3 Residential District, 3309.14 Height Districts, 3312.21A2D1 Landscaping and Screenings, 3312.25 Maneuvering, 3332.21D Building Lines, 3332.26F Minimum Side Yard Permitted, 333311ARLD Area District Requirements, 3333.18D Building Lines, and 3333.23D Minimum Side Yard permitted. Other Columbusy codes were properly located at 1309 Oak Street to permit multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District and the ARLD Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Wilcox Communities LLC, Care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is disapproval, and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval 12 to 0. I first ask for staff presentation.
Good evening. The site is divided into two subareas, one of which is zoned ARLD Apartment Residential District and developed with a single-unit dwelling, and the other being zoned in the R3 Residential District and undeveloped. This council variance will permit the construction of an 18-unit apartment building on each subarea for a total of 36 dwelling units. The variance is necessary because the R3 district permits only single-unit residential development. Additionally, the proposed density in the ARLD district is greater than that which is permitted. Variances for building height, maneuvering, parking lot landscaping, lot area, building setbacks, and minimum side yards are included in this request. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Near East Area Plan, which does not contain specific land use recommendations for this location, but it does state that in general, housing types and density should be consistent with the housing types and densities found in the surrounding area. Furthermore, the plan recommends that existing housing stock be preserved, avoiding demolitions. While staff does support residential infill development at this location, staff does not support the proposed development because it includes the demolition of an existing single-unit dwelling and because it is not compatible with the neighborhood's character, including the surrounding housing types and density as recommended by the plan. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for disapproval. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a presentation or statement from the applicant? Good evening, Mr. Perry.
Good evening, President Harden, zoning chair Tyson, and all members of council. Thank you. Yes, my name is Dave Perry. I'm here as a consultant on the application to Wilcox Communities. The development proposal is as stated by staff. There are two development areas divided by an alley. One of them is zoned for multifamily, one of them is zoned for single-family from an area rezoning. The buildings are, each parcel is proposed to be developed with an 18-unit apartment building. The buildings are pulled forward to the street to hide the parking lots behind the building. And would you, Councilmember Tyson, would you like me to address the staff comments on the application?
You certainly can.
Okay, very good. Thank you. On the question of architecture, there is a very, very wide variety of architecture within the Near East Commission area, and the project on architecture and the development in general on architecture, the project is supported by the Near East Area Commission. For, you know, if the test of architecture is that it's consistent, members of council, think of the many beautiful buildings we have around Columbus that maybe aren't consistent with what they're next to, but they're fabulous buildings. Think about the Short North, where there have been many six, eight, and 10-story buildings approved that perhaps aren't consistent with the architecture and the number of stories but are fabulous additions to the Short North. On the Near East Area Plan area, the preserve existing housing stock as a general statement of an area plan, I support that completely. It's a, one would not want to see wholesale demolition of our neighborhoods. But we have two development areas, both about four tenths of an acre each. One is vacant, and one has a house remaining on it. So, picture the Near East neighborhood, and if there's one house on four tenths of an acre, you know that other houses, several other houses were raised over the years. And so, the question is, what to do about the house? Do you build, do you build an apartment building wrapping around a single-family dwelling? I think not. That would be detrimental to the single-family dwelling. So, on the Near East Area Commission process, demolition requests that are part of a development proposal are reviewed, and in this case, the commission found the demolition of this one house to be appropriate. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I will also share with my colleagues that, you know, whenever I see a disapproval, whether it be the staff disapproval or whether it be an area commission disapproval, I make sure that I reach out. And so, I certainly talked with our planning division and spoke with Mark and Chris about why they gave a disapproval on this particular ordinance. And again, they basically were talking, sharing about kind of the mixed development, as well as, you know, the community does have a lot of mixed development, but also just the removal of a house. And so, and they thought that maybe it could have been done in a more creative way. But, and I also make sure that, but they're not here to say, well, we don't do this. They basically, we had this conversation, and it's important to have a conversation because if we are going to be, this is a Near East side, and I appreciate that the area commission has given their, President Bailey's and Chambers has supported this from 12 to 0. But it was also important for me that the developers, when the city is saying no, that the developers meet with our city staff and have an understanding that if the city also has other ideas about how to develop a parcel of land, that it is incumbent upon those developers sitting down and talking with our city staff. And that certainly happened. They came, they met, and hopefully, and I certainly have met with the Wilcox brothers, that in the future, as they are developing in communities, that I think that now they will take the time to meet with, and even though I know Mr. Perry did, but the developers will take that time and meet with them and see about if there's other ways to be able to develop the property, I would also get the city staff's approval. But seeing that, making sure that that happened, that was one of the areas, if you make sure you're meeting and understanding what's important to the city, that then, and because the area commission did support this, that I would be supportive of this development. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, then I would, well, I would move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1923-2019 to rezon 6159 Hall Road, being 8.4 acres located on the south side of Hall Road, 210 feet west of Galloway Road, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Metro Development LLC, Care of Attorney Jeffrey Brown. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential and commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Westland Area Commission's recommendation is approval 12 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1953-2019 to rezon 2125 Ackley Place. The next ordinance is 1953-2019, to rezone 2125 Ackley Place, being 41.1 acres located at the intersection of Ackley Place and Cassidy Avenue, from our rural district to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Wallace F. Ackley Company for the Cassidy, some very limited partnership. The attorney is Jeffrey L. Brown. The proposed use is commercial development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I will move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1957-2019, to rezone 3445 Morse Road, being 6.03 acres located on the south side of Morse Road, 1,000 feet west of Sunbury Road, from our rural district to CPD Commercial Plan District, Commercial Plan Development District, I'm sorry. The applicant is 3415 Morse Road LLC, Care of Attorney Jeffrey L. Brown. Proposed use is automobile dealership. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments, I first move to amend to emergency.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1962-2019, to rezone 1137 West Broad Street, being 1.16 acres located at the southwest corner of West Broad Street and South Vinewood Avenue, from M Manufacturing District to ARO Apartment Office District. The applicant is the National Church Residences, Care of Attorney Matthew Berlin. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Franklinton Air Commission recommendation is approval 15 to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1964-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of section 3332.035 R3 Residential District, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3332.05A4 Area District Lot With Requirements, 3332.13R3 Area District Requirements, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitting, other Columbus C codes for the property located at 534-536 Oakwood Avenue, to permit a three-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Robert Ellis. The proposed use is a three-unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval 8 to 3. If there are no questions or comments from colleagues, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1965-2019, to rezone 15 West Poplar Avenue, being .19 acres located at the south side of West Poplar Avenue, 133 feet west of Park Street, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Charles M. Parrows. Proposed use is a parking lot of future commercial development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Victorian Village Commission's recommendation is approval 4 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1969-2019, and that is, to rezone 1600 Oak Street, being 4.62 acres located at the northeast and southwest corners of Oak Street and Kelton Avenue, from Height Institutional District and R3 Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District and AR3 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is the Trolley Barn LLC, Care of Attorney David Hodge. And the proposed use is a mixed-use commercial and apartment residential district. And this is a $14 million project, which will include a market, a restaurant, Columbus Beering Club, pub. It will be a $15 million investment, and 102-unit apartment complex will be across the street from this development. So, the City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval 5, 11, 0 to 1. There are no questions or comments about this. It is, I first move to amend to emergency.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. This property has been vacant in the Near East side for quite some time on Oak Street, so this will be a great improvement.
That's exciting. Thank you for your leadership.
The next ordinance is 1970-2019, to grant a variance from provisions of sections 3361.02 Permitted Uses, 3333.03 AR3 Apartment Residential District Use, 3303.01 Letter A Definitions, 3311.28B Requirements, 3312.21A Landscape and Screening, 3312.49 Minimum Number of Parking Spaces Required, 3321.05B2 Vision Clearance, 3333.15C Basis of Computing Area, 3333.18B Building Lines, 3333.255 Perimeter Yard, other Columbus C codes for property located at 1600 Oak Street, to permit a mixed-use development with reduced development standards in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District and AR3 Apartment Residential District, and to repeal ordinance 1310-2007, passed September 24th of 2007. The applicant is the Trolley Barn LLC. The attorney is David Hodge. The proposed use is mixed-use commercial development, commercial and apartment residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is 1101. There are no questions or comments, I first move to amend to emergency.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1971-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3332.037 R2F Residential District and 3312.49C Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, other Columbus C codes for the property located at 529 South Third Street, to permit retail and office uses with a residential structure with parking reduction in the R2F Residential District, and to repeal ordinance 2388-83, passed December 19th of 1983. The applicant is James N. Finkin. The proposed use is office and retail uses. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the German Village Commission's recommendation is approval 6 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1972-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3356.03C4 Permitted Uses, 3309.14 Height Districts, 3312.29 Parking Space, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, and 3356.11C4 District Setbacks, setback lines of Columbus C codes for property located at 731 West Rich Street, to permit the development of a multi-unit residential development and fitness facility with reduced development standards in the C4 Commercial District. The applicant is the Ohio Community Development Finance Fund, Care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development and a fitness facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Franklinton Area Commission's recommendation is approval 13, 0 to 1. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1978-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3332.039 R4 Residential District, 3332.05 Area District Lot With Requirements, 3332.15 R4 Area District Requirements, 3332.19 Frontier, and 3332.27 Rear Yard, other Columbus C codes for the property located at 172 Buddles Avenue, to permit a single-unit dwelling, a carriage house on the rear of a lot developed with a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is Gary J. Alexander, agent. The proposed use is a carriage house on a lot developed with a two-unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Victorian Village Commission's recommendation is approval 4 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1979-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of section 3361.03D Development Plan for the property located at 40 Hutchinson Avenue, to permit a roof sign subject to the Graphics Commission approval in CPD, the Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Lincoln Point LLC. The proposed use is a roof-mounted graphic for existing development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far North Columbus Communities Coalition recommendation is approval 6 to 2. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1985-2019, to rezone 5033 Tuttle Crossing Boulevard, being 76 acres located at the southeast corner of Tuttle Crossing Boulevard and Interstate 270 from CPD Commercial Plan Development District, and LR Limited Rural District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District and LR Limited Rural District. The applicant is Seen 75 Tuttle LLC, Care of Jeffrey L. Brown. The proposed use is a revised development, revised development standards and an additional use for a regional mall. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and Hayden Run Civic Association's recommendation is approval. So, I'll first ask for a staff presentation.
The site is developed with a regional mall and an eating and drinking establishment zoned in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District and stormwater detention open space in the LR Limited Rural District. The applicant requests a new CPD district to remove use prohibitions that are no longer permitted in the C4 Commercial District, to add ancillary bowling alleys to the list of permitted uses, to establish subareas based on the parcel ownership within the mall property, enabling each subarea to be rezoned independently, to redefine signage allowances for anchor tenants, and revise the development standards mainly to reformat into our current CPD text outline form, and remove superfluous commitments, including pre-construction restrictions and items that have since been codified. The requested LR Limited Rural District is being retained with this request, as it was included as open space and stormwater detention for the existing CPD district. The CPD text proposes C4 Commercial District uses with restrictions, carries over the existing CPD plans and exhibits, and includes development standards addressing setbacks, traffic and access, landscaping, lighting, and graphics commitments. The LR text reestablishes area as exclusively open space and stormwater detention areas for the development within the CPD district. The request will permit appropriate modifications to the existing Tuttle Crossing Mall development in regard to permitted uses and signage allowances, while establishing individual subareas that can be rezoned in the future independently from each other. The request also carries over the LR district limitations and the existing CPD plans and exhibits, which contain extensive buffering and screening and consideration of the adjacent single-unit residential development. The proposed CPD Commercial Plan Development and LR Limited Rural Districts remain consistent with the established development pattern in the area, while providing additional regional commercial opportunities for the existing mall development. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Are there any questions for Ms. Pine? Seeing that, I'm going to ask for a presentation by the applicant.
Good evening, council. Jeffrey Madison, on behalf of the applicant, Seen 75 Tuttle LLC. Seen 75 purchased the former Macy's at the Mall of Tuttle Crossing in hopes to open within the next 30 to 45 days. Seen 75 is a family-focused entertainment center, opening its fifth and largest location in Columbus. It is creating more than 150 jobs, and will be an excellent addition to the mall area and city of Columbus in general. See, Seen 75 is the primary applicant, but has filed the application with the consent of Simon Property Management, and the other mall parcel owners being the Mall of Tuttle Crossing LLC, Sears, Macy's, and J.C. Penney. The application was necessitated in part because the previous CPD text was drafted prior to the mall's opening, and contained many unapplicable outdated and ambiguous provisions. The rezoning application process for the mall has been reviewed by the Columbus City Attorney's Office and our office, and this application filing was determined to be the proper method to amend the mall zoning. Primary change with respect to Seen 75 is that the permitted use section will have one modification, being that bowling alley will not, previously disallowed at the mall, will now be permitted if it is not more than 25% of a business's use. In addition to other minor revisions, a major revision for Seen 75 is that the signage allowances are clarified to be applicable to anchor tenant buildings, and not the previously defined department stores from the prior text. Seen 75 requested emergency council approval in part to clarify this signage restriction and erect its logo signage prior to opening. Finally, future zoning applications related to parcels at the mall will not require consent of all parcel owners, which will help increase desirability of all the mall parcels for future business uses. Seen 75 has met with neighboring residents on multiple occasions to explain this application, and Seen 75's operations at the mall, and has received unanimous approval from the local civic association. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Matheson. Any questions for him? Thank you. Now, may I ask you to come back up after we've heard? We have a couple speakers, okay? Thank you. So, we have, the first speaker is, for the project, is William Gates.
I represent, my name is William Gates, and I represent the local civic association at the mall site, near the mall site. I'd like to say good evening to President Harden and all city council members. I live within 125 feet of our neighborhood's border with the Mall of Tuttle Crossing. I want to thank the Seen 75 site manager, Mr. Madison, and other lawyers from the Lane Alton Firm, who represent Seen 75, for meeting with our residents to discuss their plans for a rezoning next to our neighborhood. It was not necessary for them to meet with us, because we are not a commission. However, they shared their plans, answered many questions, and addressed concerns that we had. Meeting with us, most affected by the rezoning, led to a greater understanding of the project and quelled most concerns held by our neighbors. I would like city council to consider mandating developers or rezoning applicants to meet with neighborhoods surrounding sites, rather than just encouraging them to do so. A mandate would go pretty far and help the neighborhoods understand what's going on. This would make the city appear to be a bit more neighborhood-friendly. I would also, at this time, like to welcome Seen 75 to our neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gates.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Gates? Thank you. The next speaker is Ann Gates, and she is against the project. The next speaker is Ann Gates, and she is against the project. Gates. Please state your name and who you represent.
I'm Ann Gates, and I'm president of the Shannon Heights Kilbannon Kildare Civic Association, and I was supposed to go before my husband. But that's okay. We have been in existence since nineteen eighty-nine. Our neighborhood shares the eastern border of the Mall of Tuttle Crossing. Seen Seventy-Five Entertainment will be two hundred and eighty feet from our border at one point. Ordinance nineteen eighty-five dash two nine, two zero nineteen is about to change ordinance twenty-five sixty-five ninety-two, the Tuttle Mall referendum, that was democratically voted on by the people on May fourth, nineteen ninety-three, after twenty-two thousand petition signatures were obtained by volunteers. Because no other issue was on that primary ballot in nineteen ninety-three, this vote cost the city approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What makes this referendum unusual is that it was a yes vote. Sixty-two percent of the voters affirmed that this was the appropriate zoning that included infrastructure improvements and protections such as restrictive hours of operation for a commercial entity to be constructed next to an existing single-family neighborhood. At the time of the vote, this Columbus City Charter's Section Forty-five initiatives and referendum clearly stated ordinance approved by an electoral vote shall not be repealed, amended, or supplemented except by an electoral vote. Ordinance twenty-five sixty-five ninety-two was approved by an electoral vote. The writers of the charter did not say ordinances voted on by referendums or initiatives specifically. They just say ordinances. The city charter was streamlined in two thousand and fourteen, crossing out this protection and making way for the rezoning that is being applied for tonight. My neighbors and I do not understand how a vote of the people that has protected our neighborhood can be negated twenty-six years later by a change in the city charter. I have been sent here by my neighbors tonight to ask two questions. Can the protections of the vote as stated in the charter at the time of the vote be changed now? And is there anyone on city council who can go on record and explain why the citizens' votes no longer count? Thank you.
Ms. Gates, thank you. And certainly, this has been an issue that you have called our office about the issue, and this issue has been referred to to our city attorney's office. And so Josh Cox has provided some documentation regarding this issue, and Josh is in the council chambers and they're sitting in for the city attorney this evening. So our assistant city attorney is here, and he can certainly provide not only you, Ms. Gates, but the council and the viewing and listening audience with an answer to your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Chair Tyson, President Harden, members of council. I'm not advocating for or against this rezoning, but I'm telling you that there's no legal obstacle to this rezoning for two reasons. First of all, in two thousand, the city attorney's office rendered an opinion that found that the nineteen ninety-three referendum on the Tuttle Mall zoning did not, was not applicable to former section, section forty-five of the city charter, which Ms. Gates is referencing. So it did not, it was not impacted by the unsuccessful referendum on that zoning. But more importantly, the amendments in two thousand and fourteen, that former section forty-five is no longer part of the charter. So charter operate, those changes operating prospectively apply to any ordinances that are considered by this council going forward, and there is no, again, even if it were under the old former section forty-five, there would be no prohibition, and certainly going forward under the existing charter, there is no, this rezoning is subject to change just as any other zoning ordinance.
I taught kindergarten for ten years. We voted every election day on whether we wanted vanilla ice cream or chocolate ice cream, and if most of those children voted chocolate, I better have had chocolate the next day. And I taught them that votes counted. And I understand what he's saying, but I'm still not sure that the public understands how when they want to do their voting in ninety-three that it doesn't carry forward. Thank you for listening.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming down, Mrs. Gates. Other, I don't think that her question really pertains to your, you speaking to. I think the city attorney has spoken to this issue, Attorney Matheson, unless there's something else you'd like to say. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? All right. Well, seeing none, I first would move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Now I'd like to amend to emergency.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is nineteen ninety-six dash two thousand and nineteen to grant a variance for the provisions of section thirty-three thirty-two point oh three seven R two F residential district, thirty-three twelve points two seven three parking setback line, thirty-three twelve point four nine minimum numbers of parking spaces required, thirty-three thirty-two point oh five A four area district lot with requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point one four R two F area district requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point two five maximum side yards required, thirty-three thirty-two point two six minimum side yards permitted, and thirty-three thirty-two point two eight side or rear yard obstruction of the Columbus Code for the property located at eight thirty-five, eight thirty-seven Champion Avenue to permit a three-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R two F residential district. The applicant is Arch City Investment Properties LLC. The proposed use is a three-unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Columbus South Side Air Commission is approval, twelve to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is nineteen ninety-seven dash two thousand and nineteen, excuse me, to grant a variance in provisions of sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh three nine R four residential district, thirty-three thirty-two point oh five A four area district lot with requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point one five area district requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point eighteen D basis of computing area, thirty-three thirty-two point one nine fronting, thirty-three thirty-two point two five B maximum side yards required, thirty-three thirty-two point two six C three minimum side yard permitted, and thirty-three and, let me see, I forgot these things, and thirty-three thirty-two point two seven rear yard of Columbus Code for the property located at six oh nine Denison Avenue to permit a four-unit dwelling and a two-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the R four residential district. The applicant is Julie Bullock. The proposed use is to conform an existing four-unit dwelling and a two-unit dwelling on the same lot. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Victoria Village Commission's recommendation is approval, three to zero. And again, I think there were some slips for this particular legislation. However, those slips came in after six-thirty, so we will not have any speakers on this, on this particular ordinance. And if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Chair, chair, one question. Could you, for the record, state if there were four against, the speaker slips, just, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
No, 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 no. So, let's, we have a question by the president, and so we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, same. Is this the same one? No. No, this is, not along here.
I'm sorry.
These are mixed up. Wait a second. Okay, so four. The ones, these are all mixed up, so.
We can get the information later.
Wait a minute, they're just, so they're not, they don't really all have the number of, which is ordinance.
Which is ordinance one.
Right, so I'm trying to, let's, so the ones that have, okay, so it looks like you have one, two, some of them have a twenty sixteen number. So you have a number of, you have like four, five against. You have one, that's four. So you have.
The others don't have that. Okay. Thank you.
So, I mean.
I'm comfortable.
It's past the time. What do you want?
No, I agree.
So, there won't be any speakers on this legislation. And again, I mentioned early on that when it's after six-thirty, we don't take it. And again, Victorian Village Commission's recommendation was approval, three to zero. And if there were any issues regarding this, my office had not heard from anyone on this particular legislation. So with that, I'm going to ask my, my colleagues, do you have any questions about this legislation? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
The next ordinance is nineteen ninety-eight dash two thousand and nineteen to grant a variance for the provisions of sections thirty-three sixty-three point oh one M manufacturing districts, thirty-three oh nine point oh one height districts, thirty-three twelve point oh nine aisle, thirty-three twelve point two twenty-one A landscaping and screening, thirty-three twelve point two five maneuvering, thirty-three twelve point two nine parking spaces, thirty-three twelve point four nine A B minimum number of parking spaces required, thirty-three twelve point five one loading space, thirty-three twelve point five three minimum number of, of loading spaces required, and thirty-three sixty-three point two four building lines and an M manufacturing district of the Columbus Code for property located at nine ninety Dublin Road to permit mixed-use development with reduced development standards in the M manufacturing district. The, in care of Dave Perry, if the applicant is eight ten Grandview LLC, the proposed use is a mixed-use development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission in this area. So first of all, I would ask my colleagues, I want to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Okay. So twenty sixteen dash two thousand and nineteen to grant a variance for provisions of sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh three nine R four residential district, thirty-three thirty-two point oh five A four area district lot with requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point fifteen area district requirements, and thirty-three thirty-two point eighteen D basis of computing area, thirty-three thirty-two point nineteen fronting, thirty-three thirty-two point two five B maximum side yard required, thirty-three thirty-two point two six C three minimum side yard permitted, and thirty-three thirty, thirty-two point two seven rear yard of Columbus Code for property located at six seventeen, six twenty-three Denison to permit a four-unit dwelling and a, and a two-unit carriage house on one lot with reduced development standards in the R four residential district. The applicant is Julie Bullock. The proposed use is a four-unit dwelling and a two-unit carriage house on the same lot. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Victoria Bush Commission's recommendation is approval, three to zero. And I, there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seeing no further business come for the zoning committee, may I have a motion to adjourn? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned.
Now that we have concluded the regular zoning agenda, we will, we will transition to a hearing for the zoning committee. This hearing is being held to consider the appeal regarding the downtown commission's decision denying the applicant Lamar Advertising, represented by attorney Jeffrey Brown, a certificate of appropriateness for the design, design review and approved installation of a vinyl mesh advertising mural to be located on the west elevation of eighty-eight East Broad Street. The members of this council will now hear the case and vote on this appeal. We will receive background information about the ad murals from Mark DeVillas, the Planning Division Administrator. Then the attorney for the applicant, Jeff Brown, will present. I have spoken with the chair of the Downtown Development Commission, Steve Whitman, and Mr. Whitman discussed, and Mr. Whitman discussed the matter of today's hearing with the Downtown Development Commission members. They have opted not to speak at this hearing this evening. While I, while I will leave it to Mark to provide the majority of the background details, I would like to share that this is the first time the council has been the appellate body for an issue such as this. I received guidance from the city attorney on how we should hear this matter as a body and vote on this issue. The use of ad murals in downtown Columbus was initiated in two thousand and two as a means to enliven and introduce creativity to the built environment through their placements on underutilized building facades such as blank walls. They are temporary in nature, allowing for periodic replacement. Prior to the March of two thousand and seventeen, ad murals required approval by the Downtown Development Commission and constituted fifty percent of all commission cases. In March of two thousand and seventeen, the city council passed legislation which provided for staff approval of ad murals that meet certain criteria. The downtown commission approval would, would be required for new ad mural locations and ad murals not meeting the stated criteria. As stated in the, in this, in the legislation, this approach was intended to reduce the commission's caseload, better align the review process with advertising timeframes, and respond to recent court guidance regarding the regulation of temporary graphics. The code update which council passed was supported by the downtown commission and the development commission. The case we are hearing, about hearing today was voted on by the downtown commission in October of two thousand and seventeen. The vote was three, three, one with the motion pen, with motion failing. What is also key in this case was, were rules that were resolved from a two thousand and fifteen U.S. Supreme Court ruling in favor of a small Arizona church that said its free speech rights were violated by its town's restrictions on its signs based on their content. Given the court's rulings, decisions about signs are to be content neutral. So I would now transition to our speakers and turn it over to Mark DeVillas, Planning Division Administrator. Mark, the floor is yours.
Thank you, zoning chair, Tyson, President Harden, members of council. As was mentioned, I'm with the Development Department, Planning Division, and tonight I was just going to present a brief summary of the downtown design guidelines as they relate to ad murals and the chronology of the downtown commission's consideration of the ad mural request at eighty-eight East Broad Street. As was mentioned, the city code requires a certificate of appropriateness for graphics in the downtown district. The graphics are subject to design review by the downtown commission, which utilizes the downtown design guidelines for their review. The, the design guidelines define ad murals as signs or off-premise graphics and state they are supported by the commission as was stated by the chair in certain parts of downtown to enliven the built environment. There are location guidelines and there are design guidelines. The location guidelines include the following: that ad murals should not be located adjacent to a park or riverfront; installation of murals should be limited to blank walls, and the proposal should be appropriate to the architecture of the principal building; ad murals should not be placed on primary or prominent secondary building facades; area context and character will be considered as part of the review of ad mural applications; the approval of individual ad murals by the commission does not obligate the commission to approve future murals at the same location. The design guidelines include the following: the visual effect of the ad mural should be to emphasize be to emphasize the artistic impression of the graphic; text should be limited to no more than 15% of the total area of the mural's surface; and changeable copy, animation, video screens, and similar elements are not appropriate for ad murals. The chronology of the subject application by the Downtown Commission includes the following dates: on July 25, 2017, there was a proposal by Lamar Advertising for 180-foot ad mural. The result was that this request was tabled at the request of the applicant. On October 24, 2017, there was a proposal brought by Lamar Advertisement for 180-foot ad mural, which at the meeting was suggested it could be reduced to 150-foot. And at that meeting, this proposal for approval failed due to a tied vote, as was noted, with one abstention, 3-3-1. On November 7, 2017, a revised mural was proposed and submitted by Lamar for consideration at the upcoming November 21 Downtown Commission meeting. This included a reduced version, 150-foot, of the image considered in October. On November 20, 2017, Lamar's representative requested a tabling of that submission. The case was removed from the agenda. And on November 21 of 2017, Lamar's representative submitted an appeal of the Downtown Commission's October 24, 2017 decision. And that's all I had prepared. Be happy to answer any questions, or I'd probably look to Josh for some help.
Any questions for Mark?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Counselwoman Tyson, what is the length of time for advertisement? I mean, when you have a mural up, is it 30 days, 60 days, 90 days? What's... How long was it allowed to do this?
One, generally, the certificate of appropriateness is good for one year, at which time the applicant is asked to come back to renew.
So, they could put a mural up and leave it up for a year?
One year, and then they could come back and request that it be renewed at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is the attorney for the applicant, Jeff Brown.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney for the applicant. I actually did the hearing in front of the Downtown Commission, so if you have any questions specifically about that or the process of updoing these signs downtown, I've been involved for many, many years at the commission level. Joe Miller with the Voorhees Law Firm actually did the brief, and he will be to discuss on the appeal tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson. Thank you, members of council, for your consideration, your time and attention this evening, and especially to Councilwoman Tyson, who has spent a lot of time and been very attentive to the issues involved here. I would ask to leave with the clerk of council for the record on this appeal, a copy of the brief and its exhibits that was delivered to each of you and your legislative assistants last week, as well as all of the materials on a DVD that constitute the city's file, meeting minutes, transcripts, et cetera, for purposes of the record. This city has a talented and professionally very well-qualified downtown commission, but you're presented tonight with a unique situation. The application by Lamar Advertising for an ad mural on the west elevation of 88 East Broad resulted in a 3-3 tie of the commission, where three members, I would submit to you, and it's set forth in the brief, inarguably, despite their qualifications and good service to the city, voted based upon an impermissible basis due to a development in the law in 2015. Lamar meets all of the applicable location and design review standards set forth in the city's code and the downtown Columbus design guidelines. You need not take my word for it, it was actually your city's, the city's professional staff that determined the application did in fact conform to the standards. What happened, however, was that the discussion of the commission did stray into concerns about the inability to regulate content of the ad mural. And that is violative of the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Reed v. Town of Gilbert, Arizona, it came out in 2015. And the Supreme Court ruled in that case that a municipality could not place regulations upon signs and advertising that were not content neutral, that a municipality cannot in any way regulate the content of the advertisement or sign. Prior to 2015, Mr. DeVillas could speak to this, the city did in fact have provisions in its regulations that regulated content, but the city properly stripped those out of its laws and guidelines after the decision in 2015. But you can see the problem here, that if a denial or votes against this ad or mural are based upon an inability to control content, that in fact is controlling content and can't be done under the law. The problem was compounded when there was further discussion about the location at Capitol Square. In fact, Mr. DeVillas touched upon it, the location guidelines do not in any way prohibit these ad murals at or near Capitol Square, and the commission was told by city staff that Lamar met the location guidelines. And in fact, this was the site, 88 East Broad, of ad murals previously approved. So, in the brief, we've cited to you no less than five examples of ad murals that are already on Capitol Square. The discussion and three votes based upon content control, I would submit to you, is impermissible under the First Amendment. Three votes and discussion based upon the location concerns raises due process concerns because it's in no way prohibited under your code to have these near Capitol Square. And then finally, given the existence of several ad murals already in the area, that also gives rise to concerns of equal protection under the law as well. So, three members of the Downtown Commission were fully satisfied that we met all permissible criteria and requirements. Staff was as well. We are simply asking council to affirm what staff has already found, and three members agreed, the application is appropriate under all requirements, and we're asking you to break the tie of the commission in favor of Lamar and in conformity with the law. Doing so would allow staff to issue that certificate of appropriateness and ensure that this matter need not go any farther.
Thank you, Attorney Miller. Are there any questions for Attorney Miller?
Thank you.
Thank you. And we don't have any speakers to come up and convene public testimony this evening. And so, certainly, as Attorney Miller stated, and I know Attorney Brown, that we certainly have had some significant discussion on this issue for quite some time. We've also been in constant conversations with our city attorney's office, as well as working with the Planning Division. And so, based upon hearing all this information regarding the placement of this ad mural on 88 East Broad, I want... I move a motion to approve the appeal. And this is an issue that I have deliberated over for several months. I've had, again, discussion with Attorney Brown, and again, and members of the Downtown Commission and the City Department staff. I take this... I take the input of our residents and community groups quite seriously. However, as I've made a decision, I have made a decision about this case. I've considered the U.S. Supreme Court ruling of the Arizona case, which affected content-based criteria, reviewed the notes which were documented, the Downtown Development Commission's discussion of this matter, notes which reflect several mentions of content. Further, the application submitted for the ad mural met code and guideline criteria. So, considering these facts, I move for a vote in support of this appeal, thereby reversing the Downtown Development Commission's decision opposing an ad mural at 88 East Broad Street. I hope my colleagues will join me in voting yes for this appeal.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I conclude this evening's hearing, I want to thank everyone who assisted in this hearing, the planning staff, Mark DeVillas, the city council's legislators, research office, Andrew Dwyer, the city clerk, Angie Bliven, the city attorney's office, Josh Cox, my staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, my council colleagues and their staff. Despite this being a long meeting before we go on recess, they were amenable to holding this hearing this evening, so I thank you very much. And also, the hard-working team of CTV. And finally, I want to thank the residents of Columbus, who we work for each and every day. This hearing is now adjourned.
Motion to reconvene, meeting number 40. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We are back in regular meeting number 40. We'll go back to the Public Utilities Committee. Is that correct?
Public Service.
Sorry.
Thank you, President Harden. With your permission, I'd like to return to the first reading portion of the agenda tonight for Public Utilities on page three. There are four pieces of legislation that I'd like to waive second reading on and move for passage. The first is ordinance number 1685-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew the Professional Engineering/Architectural Services Agreement with Abbott Studios for the Watershed Facilities Improvement Project for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $317,000 within the Water General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2019 capital improvement budgets. Occasionally, improvements are necessary to reduce the excessive maintenance costs and extend the life of city buildings. These upgrades of the administrative and field offices for the watershed management will have potential for positive environmental impacts and potential energy savings. There are no questions or comments from my colleagues. First, I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. I now move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 1729-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into... To renew an existing engineering agreement with Hatch Associates Consultants, Inc., for the DOSD Roof Replacements Number Two, to authorize a transfer within $310,6963 in expenditure of up to $410,000 in the Sanitary Civil General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget. This project addresses the replacement and repair of DPU roofs and roofing components, and will prevent moisture damage to process equipment, electric components, and other interior furnishings and equipment. Replacement costs of the items due to failed roofing systems could have a major impact on the department's budget. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, first, I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. Next, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Last, in Public Utilities, I have ordinance number 2075 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Danberg Electrical Corporation for the Hall Road Street Lighting Improvement Project, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $700,943.72 in the Electricity General Obligation Bond Fund for the Division of Power. It is our city's goal to eventually light every street in the city of Columbus. This project will consist of installing new street light poles with LED lights on Hall Road, Hall Road and Old Hall Road, and the George'sville area road, and the Westville and Greater Hilltop planning areas. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. Next, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden. With your permission, I'd like to move on to an ordinance and first reading of the Technology Committee.
Please.
Thank you. I have ordinance number 2078-2019 to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to enter into a contract with Harris, Mackey &amp; Brennan, Inc., to provide consulting, COBOL, and ERP payroll expert services for the Department of Technology, to augment current payroll staff so that DOT can dedicate more resources to the auditor payroll project, and to authorize the expenditure of $217,500 for this purpose from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Information Services Operating Fund. The Department of Technology is providing data mapping services to the auditor's office in support of their payroll project. This project will take place over several months, involves a replacement that saves current payroll platform, which is the reason I am requesting to waive second reading this evening. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, seeing none, I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. Next, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number 1950-2019 to adopt the updated Columbus Multimodal Thoroughfare Plan as the official guide for future improvements to Columbus's arterial street network, and to repeal ordinances 2518-93, 1003-2004, and 2408-2015. The Department of Public Service has prepared an update to the city's thoroughfare plan as part of the city's Connect Columbus Transportation Planning Initiative. Last week, I held a public hearing to discuss the plan in greater detail. The new plan represents a shift toward multimodal transportation options, and will be a key tool in advancing the city's goal for improved mobility choices that meet the needs of all of our residents. The thoroughfare plan includes a table and a map of key transportation corridors, designating necessary minimum right-of-way whiffs for future improvements. Director Gallagher, are there any additional comments you'd like to make? Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2066-2066-2019, goodness, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate... I'm reading the wrong one. Okay, let's reset. "To amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation for roadway improvements, I-70, 71, South and East Freeway Projects, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer funds from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to appropriate funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $8,200,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency." This project encompasses various improvements to I-70 and I-71 corridor in downtown Columbus, including reconstructing and widening portions of I-70 eastbound and westbound between Fourth Street and Miller Avenue, and resurfacing portions of I-70 and I-71. Are there any questions or... It's from my colleagues. I believe someone is in support of this legislation. Yeah. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance number 2071-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer funds from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders and contracts with multiple vendors for the purchase of commodities, supplies, and materials for pavement marking materials, signed manufacturing materials, school flashers, and various traffic signal commodities for the Department of Public Service, Division of Traffic Management, to authorize the Director of Finance Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements for traffic management and control for the Division of Traffic Management, to authorize the expenditure of $1,875,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for this purpose, and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service, Division of Traffic Management utilizes pavement marking materials, signed manufacturing materials, school flashers, traffic signal commodities, and a variety of traffic management and control commodities throughout the city. These supplies and materials are necessary to ensure traffic safety throughout the city of Columbus. Universal term contracts have been completed for these commodities. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2077-2019 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real property interest necessary to timely complete the roadway's improvement Sinclair Road Sidewalks project and declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service is performing the roadway improvement Sinclair Road Sidewalks Tiff Capital Fund project. The city must acquire certain fee simple title and lesser real property interest located in the vicinity of Sinclair Road between Morris Road and Strimple Avenue in order for DPS to timely complete the public project. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. President Harden, may I move on to housing?
Please.
Bless you. Up, we have ordinance number 2048-2019 to authorize the appropriation of... the appropriation of an expenditure of one million five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars remaining from fiscal year two thousand nineteen home monies within the Home Investment Partnerships Program for the Department of Development, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into agreements to provide funding for various approved housing programs that will assist first-time home buyers and for-profit and nonprofit organizations with grants, no or low-interest loans for projects designed to increase and preserve the local supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing for low- and moderate-income families, to provide funding for various approved programs, and to declare an emergency. Director Shoney, do you have any additional comments you'd like to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Harden, members of council. These home funds are core to our program to create more affordable housing in the city. We use these to leverage federal tax credit dollars, as well as a number of other programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row. By voice, please.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorans? Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Same.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance passed.
Thank you. May I move on to criminal justice and judiciary?
Please.
Up next, we have ordinance number two zero seven three dash two thousand nineteen to authorize the city attorney to settle the lawsuit of Patricia Butts Etalvy Matthew Dover Etal pending in the Franklin County Court of Common Pleas, to authorize the expenditure of up to thirty-five thousand dollars within the general fund for payment of the settlement, and to declare an emergency. Assistant City Attorney Josh Cox, could you provide us with some additional information?
Yes, Chair Favor, President Harden, members of council. This involves a March twenty-sixteen motor vehicle accident at the intersection of I-71 and E-17th Avenue. Division of Police Cruiser inadvertently ran a stop sign at the exit ramp and collided with the plaintiff's vehicle. That officer was cited for failure to yield the right-of-way. So this is just a question, and it wasn't an emergency run, so this is just a strict negligence case, and became an issue of damages. The thirty-five thousand dollars will compensate the plaintiff for the physical injuries and medical treatment that she received, and medical expenses.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And last, we have ordinance number two one two seven dash two thousand nineteen to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the claims of Brian Denbo, James Denbo, and Leah Denbo, to authorize a transfer within the general fund, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of sixty thousand dollars in settlement of these claims, and to declare an emergency. Assistant City Attorney Josh Cox, could you also provide us with some additional background?
Sure. Chair Favor, President Harden, members of council, this involves a August twenty eighteen incident on South Seventeenth Street, in which three Columbus Division of Police officers were looking for a theft suspect, came upon the Denbo property, which is a fenced backyard. A verbal altercation at that fence resulted later in the officers entering the fenced backyard, and subsequently, a physical altercation took place, as well as ultimately, the house was searched. We believe that we had liability exposure in this case, so this is a pre-litigation claim settlement, because as council knows, in these Section nineteen eighty-three cases, the prevailing party is entitled to attorney's fees. So the sixty thousand dollars that is settling this case in conjunction with the consent of the Department of Public Safety is a way to cut off those potential attorney's fees that we would encounter if we were to go to proceed with this case and accumulate some attorney's fees on the other side.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. And City Attorney, were there any actions taken after this subsequent for the officers? Was this deemed unnecessary entry, or whatever would have deemed this to get us to this point?
President Harden, I know the three officers were disciplined. I do not know what that discipline was.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, President Harden. Are there any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all from my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have one ordinance this evening, and that ordinance is nineteen thirty-six, twenty nineteen, to list the property at forty-eight Parkwood Avenue, the Ohio Baptist General Association Headquarters, AKA Foley House, Ohio Baptist General Convention, on the Columbus Register of Historic Properties as CR number seventy-eight. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to take it from the table.
Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Same.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson? President Harden?
Yes.
And I next move for passage by voice.
Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Same.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Ordinance passes.
And that's all I have in Economic Development this evening.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Workforce Development Committee. The committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you. And I have two ordinances and workforce, and I had two speakers that were here, and they've had to leave. And this ordinance number twenty ninety-nine dash two thousand nineteen to authorize the Director of Development to execute a grant agreement with the Ohio Minority Supplier Development Council for the provision of business development services, to authorize appropriation expenditure of ten thousand dollars from the Jobs Growth Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Ohio Minority Supplier Development Council received funding for the Supplier Diversity Executive Education Program, SDEE. This program will provide training and development through a partnership with OSU Fisher College of Business Curriculum that highlights operational excellence and success for businesses in Columbus. We have -- this council, and I have certainly funded the Ohio Minority Supplier Development Council for a significant number of years. Last year, they received fifty thousand dollars for individuals to be able to go through that program. And previous to that, we also have had other minority business trainings within the Ohio Minority Business Developer Supplier. This particular program, the first was last year, and just one of the individuals, who was an African-American female, she stated, how -- the question was, how does your business -- how did your business improve as a result of participating in the SDEE program? And this person wrote, "We have been thinking more outside of the box. We have expanded our services to Toledo, Ohio. We have gained more opportunities in North Carolina. This was due to what I learned from this program, as well as from other businesses who participated in the program. We have worked with two companies who were in the program. Always great to work with other minority-owned firms. We recommend this program for other MBEs. We are blessed to have this opportunity." And I know, as we're continuing to move forward with the -- and we'll hear about it in a little bit, but continuing to make sure that we have more opportunities for especially women of color. Last year, four, five women of color were in this program at the Ohio State University. And again, previously, I have certainly funded WBEs and MBEs to get additional training to be able to move their businesses forward. And so this is just, again, another example of how you move a business, how you help move businesses to the next level through the executive development program. If there are no questions or comments, I would ask my colleagues to approve it. I also want to mention that the present CEO, Jackie Neal, of the Ohio Minority Supplier Development Council was in council chambers, and she just left a few minutes ago, because she wasn't feeling well. So I'm glad she was in chambers. And so with that, I'm going to ask my colleagues that they will ask for them to approve this legislation.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. And my final ordinance is ordinance twenty-one hundred dash two thousand nineteen to authorize Columbus Council to enter into a grant agreement with Sinclair Media for sponsorship of WSYX ABC Jobs Boot Camp, and to authorize the appropriation expenditure of eight thousand dollars in the Job Growth Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation has been co-sponsored by Councilmember Rob Dorans. ABC Jobs Boot Camp is free to all residents, and the upcoming events will occur at the Columbus Metropolitan Library from eleven until three P.M. There's been two other bootcamps this year. Again, they're both at the library. One of them had twenty-eight employers, the other had thirty-three approximate attendees. One had six hundred attendees, the other has five hundred. But also, this is an opportunity to boot camp, to be able to enhance individual skills. And I'm thankful for the citywide training and development, because they are always an attendant. They provide expertise on resume lab -- resume labs. We've also had the employment for seniors. Ohio means jobs are always there, too. So again, I appreciate the workshop training sessions, too, by the citywide training and development. That's them. The next date is July thirty-first of two thousand nineteen, and again, at the Columbus Metropolitan Library from eleven until three. And sponsorship of this event aligns the Columbus Council's priority of promoting opportunities for job creation and workforce development and technology integration. If there are no other questions or comments, I would move for passage. Oh, Rob? Do you want to say? Thank you.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have, my committee.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Small and Minority Business Committee. I chair that committee. We have one ordinance, ordinance zero two two zero X dash two thousand nineteen, is to accept the findings of the City of Columbus twenty nineteen disparity study, and the conclusions regarding minority and women-owned business enterprises, and to request that the Office of Diversity and Inclusion develop an implementation plan to address the disparities identified within the disparity study. In two thousand seventeen, the Office of Diversity and Inclusion commissioned Mason Tillman to conduct a disparity study. The goal of the study was to determine whether minority and women-owned businesses have an equal access to the city's contracting opportunities. The disparity study forms a legal foundation for future policy changes aimed at ensuring equitable contracting. The legislation before council this evening is to accept this study as our legal foundation. We are not implementing any changes to our procurement process through this legislation. Director Brown, would you give council a brief summary of the disparity study's findings, very brief?
Sure, thank you, Council President Harden, members of council. I will attempt to be brief. Essentially, what the disparity study was able to glean for the city is that there does exist disparities in our contracting with minority and women-owned companies at various levels of our contracting. As we've talked over the last couple of weeks, what it does for us is gives us a snapshot in time with respect to our contracting and the environment in which minority and women-owned businesses operate, while preventing -- while creating for us a roadmap for how we move forward. So the recommendations that have been outlined in the study will be defined by a team within the city of Columbus, and allows us an opportunity to begin to move forward in addressing those disparities.
Thank you, Director. And just two points would you hit on. One, the time period, it took a little bit longer, there was a data issue. If you would hit on that quickly. And then, secondly, what are the next steps? When do we expect council to hear from the department again regarding how we move forward?
Sure, thank you, Council President Harden. In terms of the data, it was important for us that we were able to have a complete and accurate data set in order to form the recommendations that were put forth. And so with approximately seven hundred thousand lines of data, and more than two thousand hours of people hours, we were able to work with a cross-collaborative team throughout the city in order to ensure that that data was both complete and accurate. With respect to next steps, they begin actually next Monday, August fifth, we will host two community meetings with the consultant in town to begin to talk about those findings of the study, talk about next steps, and really begin to engage the community, those most impacted by those recommendations in terms of how we begin to move forward. Additionally, with that, we will begin to work with our city departments as partners to ensure that as we move forward, we do so in a manner that is appropriate for the disparities that we've seen.
Thank you, Director. Are there questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage, accepting the results of the disparity study.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Ordinance is passed. Then, moving on to the final committee rules and reference, I have ordinance twenty-one thirty-eight dash two thousand nineteen is to declare the insufficiency of a petition to amend the Charter of the City of Columbus filed with the city clerk on July eighth, two thousand nineteen, and to declare an emergency. On July eighth, two thousand nineteen, petitioners filed with the city clerk a petition to amend the Charter of the City of Columbus. The proposed addition to the charter would be to create Section two four two, protection from local taxes and fees on arts and entertainment. Petitioners filed eight oh three petitions purporting to contain twenty-two thousand ninety-five signatures of Columbus electors. The people have established in the Ohio Constitution and the Charter of the City of Columbus a requirement that petitioners file valid signatures of no less than ten percent of the electors in the last preceding municipal election to place such an issue on the ballot. Since one hundred and ten thousand two hundred and ninety-two Columbus residents voted in the last general municipal election on November seventh, two thousand seventeen, petitioners must present eleven thousand thirty valid signatures. On July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, the Franklin County Board of Elections, following a thorough, timely review, communicated to the city clerk that the petitioners contained twenty -- ten thousand seven hundred and forty-six valid signatures. Furthermore, the Franklin County Board of Elections indicated that one of the petitioners was not a qualified elector of the City of Columbus, which is required. On July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, the city attorney communicated to council and the city clerk his opinion that the petition is insufficient as a matter of law. The petitioners failed to meet the mandatory minimum standards established by the people in the Ohio Constitution and the Charter of the City of Columbus, and as such, their proposed charter amendment is legally insufficient, and shall not be submitted to the electors of the City of Columbus. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty-one forty-three to repeal ordinance number two thousand seven dash two thousand nineteen, passed on July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, to find not legally sufficient a petition for a proposed ordinance titled "To authorize and direct the city auditor to establish an energy conservation and energy efficiency fund, a clean energy education and training fund, a minority business enterprise clean energy development fund, and to transfer five million dollars to each of these funds for a total of fifteen million dollars for the appropriate purposes, to establish a Columbus Clean Energy Partnership Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of forty-two million dollars for the purpose of funding an electricity subsidy program for residents of the City of Columbus, to establish a transparency and accountability, a reporting requirement for the city auditor for all uses of funds in Sections one, two, three, and four, and to waive in a competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. On June eighteen, two thousand eighteen, petitioners filed with the city clerk a precirculation copy of a petition for the aforementioned ordinance. On June twelfth, two thousand nineteen, petitioners filed with the city clerk a petition for said ordinance. Petitioners filed six hundred and thirty-three part petitions containing fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight signatures. On June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, City Attorney Klein advised the city council that the subject petition appeared to comply with Section forty-two dash two of the city charter, which sets forth the requirement as to form of each petition for a proposal initiated by a citizen. The Board of Elections reported to the city clerk that the total number of valid signatures exceeded the standard as defined in Section forty-three of the charter, equal to not less than five percent of the total vote cast at the last preceding municipal election for Relying on both the city attorney Klein's memorandum and both in the Board of Elections' report, city council passed ordinance number two thousand seven dash two thousand nineteen on July fifteen, twenty nineteen, finding the petition legally sufficient. However, on July twenty-sixth, City Attorney Klein's office submitted a revised memorandum to city council regarding the legal sufficiency of the petition. City attorney advised in this new memo that due to an error in the reviewing a prior version of the petition, the opinion set forth in June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen memorandum was inaccurate due to it being premised on a different petition than the one currently being considered by city council. In that revised memorandum, the city attorney concluded that the petition contained several errors that result in noncompliance with the form requirements set errors that result in noncompliance with the form requirements set forth in Section 42-2 of the city charter. Accordingly, the city attorney's office has recommended that ordinance number 2007-2019 be repealed, and that a new ordinance be passed to declare the petition not legally sufficient. City Attorney's Office, is there anything that you'd like to add, or was that an accurate summation of the circumstance?
President Harden, members of council, that is accurate, and I just want to apologize for our error, my error, on that erroneous advice you got earlier, but I think council, our office has an obligation to provide accurate advice on this matter, and council, because the petition's not yet been sent to the Board of Elections, has an obligation to only send a sufficient petition to the board, and that's the basis for our recommendation.
We appreciate your memo. Thank you for, thank you, City Attorney. We've heard from local environmental groups about the lack of transparency and accountability in the proposed ordinance. The mayor has remarked about the large division of public resources to a private external group, a diversion similar to eliminating the budget for the Department of Recreation and Parks, but the memo from the city attorney speaks to form and not content. And with that, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed. Seeing no further business, we come for council. One, I would like to wish directors, do we have some, just joking, we have one more thing before we go on. Assess, one second. President Harden, see next page. We have one appointment, A0139-2019, is the reappointment of John Ingerson on the Development Commission with a new term expiration date of 7/31/2022. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for approval. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Approved. Now, we wish you all a happy break. We will be back September 9th, September 9th. Seeing no further business, motion to adjourn. Please call the row. Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adjourn.